Can you guys see, Alex and Peter, can you guys see the dais? I see a, oh, there we go. Okay, are we ready? Yes?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 16th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. We will bring the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Villanueva, would you mind leading us, please, in the pledge?
Sure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, can we please have roll call?
Alex Velto?
Here.
JD Draculich?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva?
Here.
Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next item is number three, public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
Before we start public comment, let me just read this disclosure here real quick. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note, the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior. You will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that, I did not receive any request to speak forms. I did not receive any voicemails for this item. There were, we received four emails for the tree ordinance and future agenda items. They were forwarded to the Planning Commission. They have been entered into the record, and they were also forwarded to the planners.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll close public comment and move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes from the regular February 16th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Go ahead, Christian Gower.
Sorry to jump the gun there, Commissioner Johnson. Christian Gower, I'll move to approve those minutes.
Mr. Bell, two seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will move on to item number five, which is public hearings. And the first item that we have is 5.1. This is case number LBC 22-00049, North Valley's Commerce Center. This is a request for a conditional use permit. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
We do. We have Mike Reilly here. We're just bringing up his presentations. Hang on just one second, Mike.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Mike Reilly with Christie Corporation, here representing the project applicant. Also with me is Eric Eklund with Prism Realty Corporation, the project applicant. So, is it turned on? Okay. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for manufacturing, processing, or a storage, distribution, warehouse use to operate between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. In other words, 24 hours within a portion of the project site. So as you'll see, it sounds a little complicated, but when you see this, how simple it is, I think it'll all make sense. The site is located at 9456 North Virginia Street. It's currently under construction. If you had a chance to go out and visit the site, obviously, the aerial hasn't been updated with the recent construction, but I do have some pictures. So this is the building in question, and essentially, there's a 5,400 square foot, or excuse me, an 8,500 square foot corner of this building that's a total of 154,000 square feet that's zoned, makes you suburban with the remainder of the building zoned, I see. So what this use permit would do is essentially permit 24-hour use within the entire building. So the majority of the building is already, is permitted by right. It's essentially an administrative process to make sure that the entire building is covered. And as you can see from these pictures, the portion of the building that's zoned, MS, contains no windows, no doors, and like I say, is already constructed. So that's kind of an interior view without the roof, obviously. We're just literally talking about one small section of the building. This is the master plan, and as you can see, the site does have a split designation. So the building is essentially straddling that line, and the zoning is the same way. So this is the overall site plan, looking from North Virginia Street. And then this gives you an idea of the portion of the building that has the mixed suburban So the purpose of this is to ensure full code compliance for a future tenant that would be permitted 24-hour use. All activity is contained, fully contained within the building. There's no additional impacts that are created by this request. It only accounts for five and a half percent of the total project area, and as I mentioned, it's 8,500 square feet of an overall 154,000 square foot building. So it's really a simple request, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have a presentation from Leah?
Yes, she's on her way. Hang on.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Leah Brock. This is the first time I'm presenting in person to all of you, so hello. I am the Assistant, for the record, Leah Brock, Assistant Planner with Development Services, City of Reno. I am presenting the application for the conditional use permit for 24-hour operations for the North Valley's Commerce Center. The subject 14.26 acre site is located north of the intersection between North Virginia Street and Seneca Drive. The applicant is requesting approval of the conditional use permit to allow for 24-hour operations in the 8,500 square foot portion of the existing 154,440 square foot warehouse and distribution facility. The overall subject parcel is located mostly in the industrial commercial zoning district with approximate half acre portion in the mixed use suburban district. The split zoning was created when the subject half acre was combined with the adjacent parcel through a reversion to acreage in May of 2021. The industrial commercial zoning district does allow for 24-hour use, while the mixed use suburban zoning district requires the conditional use permit for operations between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Key issues related to this request are compatibility with the proposed use and surrounding zoning districts and land uses and conformance with the master plan. The general area was converted to the mixed use suburban zoning district through a code update in January 2021. This new zoning district created nonconformities with the master planned land use designation of industrial. You may remember a few weeks ago, a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately 256 acres, including the majority of this property, from the mixed use suburban to the conforming industrial commercial zoning district. That request was approved on February 23rd, 2022. The subject area of request could not be rezoned along with the rest of the parcel because that portion of the parcel is located in the suburban mixed use, suburban mixed use land designation. A rezoning to the industrial commercial zoning district would have created a nonconforming zoning district. However, per the structure plan framework of the Reno master plan, the subject parcel is located within the industrial logistics employment area. As proposed and with the recommended conditions, the project is in substantial conformance with the master plan and the applicable master plan goals and policies, including the employment area residential compatibility standards, which recommends a site layout designated to mitigate noise, odor, lighting, and other potential impacts. On the map here, you can see the unique characteristics of this area. There is a small island of mixed use suburban, which does allow for warehousing and distribution, with developed and undeveloped industrial commercial on three sides and residential uses on the eastern side. The proposed use was presented to the Ward Four Neighborhood Advisory Board on February 17th, 2022, and staff has not received any comments. The use of this parcel as a warehouse and distribution center is allowed by right in both zoning districts. 24-hour operations are allowed by right in the commercial zoning district. The site has been planned accordingly with no doors, windows, loading bays, or other outdoor uses on the subject portion of the parcel. The application is essentially a formal way of resolving a discrepancy created by the split zoning and split land use designations. In conclusion, the proposed use meets or exceeds all use standards in code and addresses the applicable findings. Therefore, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. The recommended motion is on the screen, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Welcome. Perfect presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, let's do disclosures real quick. We will start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Johnson, no disclosures on this item?
Commissioner Draculich?
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site.
Commissioner Munoz, no disclosures.
Okay, Commissioner Velto?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item?
I did not receive any request to speak forms. No correspondence or voicemails were received on this item.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for questions of either the applicant or Leah. Anyone in chambers?
Commissioner Villanueva, I have a couple of questions for the, oh, let's start with the planner.
Hi.
Hi.
Does anyone own, is that MS zone to the right of the parcel, is that owned by anyone other than the applicant? Does someone else own that parcel?
To the, to the west?
I think it would be the west. There's no...
The west is owned by the applicant. The east is owned by somebody else.
Okay. It would be the one more toward Hindle. So the parcel, just me, for, right here, I'm looking at the right. I don't have any, I don't have any directional, anything directional on my map. So the parcel directly to the right, near Hindle. So I'm not sure what that actually is, practically speaking.
I believe it is the parcel to the east that you're referring to.
Okay. So, so north, that, so you said that's north? Okay. Okay. So yes, the east parcel. So who owns the east parcel? Does the applicant own the east parcel?
No, they do not. It's privately owned. I do not have record of who actually owns it, but it is not owned by the applicant.
And what, what is that parcel being used for currently?
It is currently residential use.
Okay. So what, do you know if that residence was there prior to this application being approved in, I think you said, February?
That residence was there at that time, yes.
Okay. And has the applicant, or actually, this is for the applicant. Have you received any correspondence or communication with the individual who lives?
We have not. But this is, this property has gone through several rounds of hearings through these zoning processes, the NABs, there's been no objections from the adjoining property owners.
Okay. And do you know if notice went out to that?
It did, absolutely.
It did, and you guys haven't received anything in response?
We have not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions in chambers? Okay, I don't see any hands, anybody on virtually?
Commissioner Velto, if there's no questions, I know you want to, you might want to entertain discussion, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Is there any discussion?
Commissioner Villanueva, I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. So I understand what the applicant's doing. I'm generally fine with it. I think if there was, if we did get input from that neighbor, and if there was opposition, I would definitely be opposed because I do think it's almost like we're forcing some of the residential neighboring folks out by kind of some of this, you know, industrial growth that we're having, having there. I know a lot of the residents were there first. Nevertheless, given that we haven't received any opposition, I'd be okay with moving forward. I'm just putting it out there on the record so we know moving forward, so that, you know, public's aware moving forward of kind of how I feel in these type of situations. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, Commissioner Velto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the matter of case number LDC 22-00049, based upon compliance, the applicable findings, I move to make, I move to approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Draculich, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you again, Leah. We hope to see you back soon.
Thank you very much.
Item number 5.2, this is case number LDC 22-00052, Piketty Ranch Town Homes. I hope I said that right. This is a request for a tentative map, a conditional use permit, residential street tree requirement variance, and major deviation. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes, we have Dave Snellgrove here in the audience, and we are bringing his presentation up right now.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I'm appreciative of being here. I think this, in all my years of giving presentations, this is my first truly international one with Commissioner Velto being in a different country, so it's kind of a notable event. We have the, the project before you is a townhome project that's up at the north end of the, of the South Meadows Business Park area where, where Gateway Drive, as it goes to the north, turns into Offenhouser. There are four parcels in association with the overall property. The total acreage is 6.3 acres. So the request before your tentative map for the, for the townhome product, conditional use permit, because we have more than 20 single-family attached dwellings. There is also an alternative code compliance, and I'll go through that, and also major deviation. The alternative code compliance relative to street tree requirement, and also the major deviation is to vary from the enhanced adjacency setbacks, and I'll point out where that is on the site. So the surrounding uses, the property up to the north of us, we have apartments on Offenhouser, and then also the Huffaker Park area. That's the Huffaker Park Trail, and up a little bit north of that is the actual Huffaker Park with playground equipment, sports fields, tennis courts and such. We have a daycare center off to the east of us, directly adjacent, and office uses. There's a fitness center with the South Reno Athletic Club. And then you've got the freeway that's closest to us. I believe that there is supposed to be a, the vacant property directly south of this. I think that there's a plan coming forward for mini storage there. Though the master plan and zoning of the property, the predominance of the property is owned suburban mixed use in that salmon color on the left-hand map. There's a jagged piece on the front, and that's actually a remnant piece that's part of the planned development for the South Meadows Business Park. We've got no plans to do anything with that, as right now, it's provided as landscape, and there's an access going in on the, on the western side of the property. We'll have our accesses going through there, but there are no buildings that will be located on that portion of the property. It was purchased because it gives the, gives the frontage and gives the access, but it's kind of a weird little piece of property that if we tried to join it in through zoning, we'd actually be bumping into some challenges with the PUD that's been in existence for quite some time to the south. So it'll stay as a, as a landscape area and access. The zoning map conforms over that. We have MF30 zoning, which is conformant to the suburban mixed use. Looking at the map on the right, there's six total acres of MF30 zoning on the property, and then you have planned development in that sliver of property. The zoning of MF30 would allow for up to 179 units on the, on the six acre property, just looking at that alone. This is, I took this picture from where our proposed access point is, and the reason that we put the proposed access point where, where we, you'll see on the next map, it's on the outside of a curve, gives good visibility on Gateway Drive. At different points of this site, you start to get a little bit more blockage, so we wanted to make sure that there was good visibility getting in and out of the site. These are photos of the existing site. These are actually from the trail on Huffaker Trail area, just to the north of the property. The one at the bottom is actually, we will have a trail connection that goes out to connect in with Huffaker Park Trail, and that's about in alignment with it. So you can see the topography on the parkland is not super drastic, and we'll be able to get a trail up there easily. There's already a trail that leads over to the apartments. I've been on that myself, and it's a, it's a nice passive recreation area that'll be readily available to, to the future residents in this project. This is a picture from down by Gateway Drive. Both of these pictures are up, on the upper left-hand corner, that is from the eastern side of the property, closest to the daycare center, looking across the parcel. And this picture on the bottom right is on the western side of the property, and the adjacent neighbor is a fairly recently built Storequest Mini Storage that comes up right, right, probably within four or five feet from property line. So this is our site plan. I will give you a little history on the site plan, that when we initially submitted this, we had a pool in here, and one of the buildings was turned facing, facing north. We met with Councilwoman Doer. We know that the tree ordinance is going through. We know that trees, there's great sensitivity to them, and we met with her out on the site to look at, see if there were some of the trees that we could save. And there's a couple that are a little bit darker north. If you go down to the bottom and three buildings over from the left, there's a couple evergreen trees that are just north of that building. We initially had that in our detention pond area, and it would have affected those trees. So we did some, did some midstream adjustments and created a little bit bigger playfield area, got rid of the pool and turned the building, and we were able to save those trees along with four of the trees along the street frontage that are Austrian pines. The two that we'd be saving are red, red cedar and a juniper, and they're actually year-round visible and prominent on the site. So we were trying to be sensitive of that. There's a couple other trees that we possibly could save. They're both Siberian elms, which can be fairly invasive. We will meet with the urban forester and condition aid addresses that on the Siberian elms and also the saving of the other trees. The architecture, we feel that the architecture fits within the area in which it's located, and I'll have some pictures of the surrounding architecture in the office park area. We are transitioning from a purely residential area with Offenhouser and a lot of, lot of multifamily uses into an area that tends to be more office industrial. So this is the architectural styling that's proposed with the townhouses. This is the front and back elevation. The, you have the garage doors lined up, and those will be off of common driveways, alleyways, so to speak. And this, the side elevations really don't have any balconies or windows, and the way we have these turned to the apartments to the north of us, most of the, actually, I think all the buildings actually don't have balconies facing out towards the apartment, so they're all sides that you would see there. So there's not a privacy issue that may come into play, and we also have quite a bit of distance. This is the architecture that surrounds us both to the east and the west. In the upper left-hand corner is the mini storage building. It's another flat roof building. Just off to the left-hand side of the picture is where the, where the existing apartments are. And these other two pictures are from on the eastern side, the daycare center and some of the office uses that exist. The size of the units will range from 1,789 in unit A, and then the smallest size in unit C will be 1,541. Each one will provide a two-car garage. And I wanted to go through the two that aren't kind of normal that you look at, the alternative equivalent compliance for street trees, and point out that there's, there's a requirement because we're basically going to have private streets in here. Normally, the code says you have to plant one tree every 30 lineal feet of the street. Well, what we've got are these finger alleys that come up and they access the driveways, and are really not a whole lot of room for planting of trees, but we've got to take those trees and put them out throughout the site. We are meeting the number of trees that are required on the site, they're just distributed differently. Also, too, you can see on the alleyway, I have little labeling on it, this kind of red with white, white outlines. Those are the alleyway driveways that access the garages. An interior to that, you've got a, basically a walk street or passeau walkway. That doesn't show any trees right now, but there will be some trees planted in there. That just wasn't put onto the, on the landscape plan at this level, but as we get into more detail, there will be some trees through that. So we've had kind of an interesting thing, that the front yard could arguably be considered the backyard, and the backyard could be considered the front. We feel, and staff agrees with us, that we're meeting the intent of this, this portion of code with what we're proposing. The major deviation to very enhanced adjacency setbacks, this only applies to large lot residential zone properties, single-family zone properties, MF14, and then the pawning district are the only zones that's applicable. So where we have this applicability for additional setback is on, primarily along the north side that requires that once you go over 12 feet with your building, you've got to add an additional foot of setback for every, for every foot of building height. This would give us a 25-foot required setback, and we've got the apartment buildings up to the north, and I'll say that those, that would be the area that I'd see the greatest sensitivity, if any. And there's already a 75-foot distance between their property line and the nearest residential building, and then we have an additional 15 foot, so there's going to be 90 feet between buildings. The reason that this was put into the code is not to create canyons that, that development doesn't get too close when you're even, either adjacent to a large lot residential, single-family, and they included multifamily 14 in that. Obviously, when we get over to the mini storage, it's not as big a deal there because they've got a two-story wall about five feet off property. We do meet it there, meet the setback requirement with this enhanced setback. When you get over to the park, it's really open space, so there's not a whole lot that you're, you're worried about in creating a canyon. I mentioned before that we'll have a trail connection, and it'll be approximately in that area of the very vibrant green color. You can see the trail that goes off over into the apartment land, so we'd connect into that and then be able to have people get around the, the park act, the park trail, and that leads all the way up to Huffaker Park as well. Oh, there's the site plan that we had before, it still has the pool on it, so you can see that's what we started with, and we shifted it around. We did, I mentioned before that we took a look at trees. We tried to be proactive on this. We understood that there were, there were some things going through code, and the trees interior to the site right now are not protected by code, but we did try and treat those with sensitivity. The only ones that have protection really are along the streets, and there's four evergreens that we can see, and I'll point out that the two that are kind of in the middle of that picture, that's kind of an optimal place for our driveway to come out, and for reasons I pointed out earlier, that you have the best visibility both to the east and west. So we do have to plant additional trees for that. I think we have 189 total trees that will have to be planted on the site, and that's inclusive of the penalty in association with taking out those two Austrian pines. There, looking back at some of the historical photos, it looked like there were about 15 or 16 trees that were planted in that little landscape area along the frontage and that grass area. Over time, they've either died, or they've been hit by cars, or something happened over that period. So these are the, the two green circles. Those are the red cedar and the juniper that we shifted things around, and we'll be able to save those. We'll work with the urban forester in terms of the root protection when, when development and demolition's going on. The two blue ones are the two Siberian elms that are questionable. We have to do some grading in there, and I don't know if they're the greatest tree to save in an area with new infrastructure and new paving and all that. I imagine the root system is probably pretty extensive already. And then the four purple circles, those are the four Austrian pines that are along the street frontage that will be saved through this. That's just another circle of where those are, and how they, how the red cedar and the juniper, and you can see them in the photo, they're off to the bottom left, where those sit relative to the site plan that we've adjourned. Where those sit relative to the site plan that we've adjusted. And also too, in that blue circle, that's where the two Siberian elms are. Overall, the project has six point three acres of, uh, of land. Three tenths of that is in the area that's planned development. So really our MF thirty areas is only six acres in size. Two point five nine acres of it will be in residential lot area. And three point seven two acres is in common area, which is inclusive of our common driveways. Maximum allowed units on the property with the six acres at MF thirty would be a hundred and seventy-nine units. We're proposing seventy-nine. And the, we'll have two common area lots in association with this. So there will be eighty-one lots, but the rest of them will be, uh, will be residential lots. The gross density, now this gross density I have calculates off the six point three acres. And Nathan Gilbert, the city planner on this said, oh, he ran the numbers. And I think we're at thirteen point two dwelling units per acre. If you just look at the six acres that is owned MF thirty. We agree with the staff's, uh, analysis and recommendation on this project and believe that all the legal findings can be made. Be available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dave. Nathan, do you have a presentation?
Sure do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, for the record, Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner with Development Services. Michelle, uh, can you give me access to present?
Hang on, hang on just a second.
Thank you.
Try it now. Okay, good.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I, can you, can you all see this?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Uh, Dave did a great job, uh, covering the bases of this request. Uh, this is a request, uh, for a tentative map for seventy-nine units. Uh, excuse me, seventy-nine single-family, uh, attached townhome lots. And a conditional use permit for more than twenty single-family townhomes. Uh, there is also alternative equivalent compliance to vary from the, uh, interior streets. The street tree requirements, as Dave covered, and a major deviation to vary from the enhanced setback standards that Dave also covered. The master plan is, uh, is suburban mixed use. And the zoning is multifamily thirty units per acre. This was adopted by council in two thousand and nineteen. It was a change from professional office to MF thirty to support, uh, higher intensity residential zoning on the site. Key issues in staff analysis were site design and land use compatibility. Uh, there are seventy-nine lots, as Dave mentioned, thirteen point two dwelling units per acre. That, uh, that, that is, uh, only taking into accommodation the MF thirty portion, uh, that, that's zoned. There is that suburban mixed use portion to the south, which would be limited to, uh, trees and, and access to the site. The project features a Paseo lot design with rear garage access. And typically we see this with, uh, with specific planned districts or in PUDs. Uh, it gets a little, uh, technical when, when we apply this design to, uh, our standard code. The MF thirty zoning designation. And because of that, we need, uh, the minor devi-, excuse me, major deviation, uh, to, to address the infill standards, which are base code. The alternative equivalent compliance is requested for street trees. Dave mentioned that this is, uh, alleys. These are private streets. However, they, uh, they do not meet the alley standards. If they were alleys, uh, by, by technical design, the street tree standards wouldn't apply. So staff does support with conditions that, uh, the trees, the street tree requirement be implemented, uh, in, in alternative locations throughout the site. And that's condition number seven. Uh, the overall design is a two-story townhome product, twenty-seven foot maximum height. Three stories allowed, forty-five foot maximum, uh, in the MF thirty zone. There are a hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces required. The applicant's providing a hundred and ninety-three with thirty-five surface parking spaces available, uh, within the development. Condition number five would limit driveway length to three feet. Standard code requirement has a driveway access to garage at twenty feet. Uh, this is a, a somewhat unique design, uh, but staff would recommend that condition, uh, to, to, um, you know, ensure that, illegal parking is addressed. It's less of a concern with private streets. However, uh, there were some portions in the initial site plan, uh, with ten-foot driveways, which could create parking conflicts. Condition number five would address those concerns. The major deviation relates to infill setbacks, as they've mentioned. This is, uh, predominantly related for, for, for infill development to create, uh, to, to limit the impacts of that canyon-type development. In this instance, uh, with the, the proposed fifteen-foot setback, the, uh, proposed structures are ninety feet away from any proposed, or any existing multifamily building. The thirty-three percent reduction to that enhanced setback standard seems appropriate in this instance. Uh, also, condition number eleven, uh, would, uh, ensure that trail access to the city park, Huffaker Park, which is zoned MF fourteen, master plan, park screenways and open spaces owned by the city of Reno, uh, would be maintained. Staff received no general public comment. Two NAB comments were received related to traffic and building design. Staff can make the applicable findings and recommends approval of the tentative map, conditional use permit, alternative equivalent compliance and major deviation subject to conditions in your staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Uh, Commissioners, let's have disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Veltou.
Uh, Commissioner Veltou, very familiar with the site, uh, no other disclosures.
Uh, Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, um, familiar with the site, no other disclosures.
And we'll go to chambers and start with Commissioner Munoz and go down from there, please.
Commissioner Munoz, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site. I got a call from the applicant, didn't talk to the applicant, uh, no other disclosures.
Commissioner Dracula, familiar with the site and spoke briefly on the phone with the applicant.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site, no other disclosures.
Uh, Commissioner Taylor, I am familiar with the site, no other disclosures. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
I did not receive any request to speak forms for this item. No correspondence and no voicemails were received. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to make public comment on this item? Okay, so we're good.
Okay, well, closed public comment. And, um, Commissioners, do we have any questions for either the applicant or Nathan? Anyone in the, in chambers?
Commissioner Villanueva, I do have a question. The question is for the applicant. Hi, welcome. It looks like there's one driveway entry into the, the, um, the development. Is that accurate?
Well, if I could have, uh, Michelle bring back up my presentation, I'll point it out on the site plan. There are actually two accesses. One will be a gated emergency access, but there's one primary access in. That'll be a, let's see, go, go back to one of my. Yeah, this one's as good as any. The one in the middle with the three pinkish trees going down it, that'll be a median separated access. So there'll be one in and one out. The reason that the top two trees are separated, there's actually a turnaround as we do have a gate there where that, where that top tree is. The other access down will be a gated emergency access that comes down. That's available in, in case of an emergency. We've, uh, gone through, gone through this. I don't think we got any comments back from fire, but we do meet the standards for, for primary and secondary access.
Okay, where's that second? I just don't see it on there.
Oh, it's actually over, over to the right-hand side of the photo. You've got the first building in and there, that actua-, that driveway actually connects down. Yeah.
Dave, you can use the mouse as a pointer.
Could, does the pointer work?
No, the mouse, use the mouse.
Oh, hey, that's even better. Right here is where the second access is.
Exit or?
Yeah, that would be a gated emergency access only.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Chair Taylor, I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
So looking at that map, when you, when you're going down, get the street name right, um, is it Gateway?
Yes, Gateway Drive.
So when you're driving down Gateway and you take that turn going south, I feel like I've seen people take that turn pretty quickly. Is it, is it possible to, uh, put a sign up maybe on the left? Because if the people are turning in, you know, I don't know how many feet that is, but would it be possible to put a sign up? Maybe where those green trees are?
I've been to try and understand which direction. Are you over here on this side or over here on, on the east or west side?
West side, west side.
West side, over here. Okay. I'm going to go back to slide that I had originally here. This is the view over to the west side from where our access would be. And it offers good visibility. Even any trees that we'd put out in here, they'd still leave the visibility open. And the same thing with the view to the, view to the east. We feel that, and where the site access is currently, where the driveway runs into the site is right here, which is an odd location. Now granted, there's only two homes on the property right now. But we did have initially in the site plan, the, the driveway located over here. And that, that was just a bad location. Getting it to the outside of that curb really opens up the visibility quite a bit, as you can see from these photos.
That makes a lot of sense and I, that, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, there is, there is a center turn lane that's already been established here as well.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
Nathan, I have a quick question. And I think you were explaining it and either my computer cut out or your computer froze. But on condition number five, it talks about the driveways of three feet. What, can you explain that a little bit to me and help me understand that?
Yeah, absolutely. Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner, Development Services. So, uh, i- i- in this instance, uh, because of the lot configuration, they are proposing generally three foot, three-foot driveway access, uh, to the garage orientation. And staff, uh, is recommendation and the condition of approval, uh, would limit it to, to three feet. A standard driveway is, uh, twenty foot long. And the planning commission and staff have discretion, you know, with that. Staff's recommendation that would, would, would be that we maintain, uh, a maximum driveway length as proposed to three feet. There are some portions that are ten foot long. And that can create, uh, illegal parking situations, uh, that we would like to avoid.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the part that I, that I missed. Commissioners, other questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I just have a discussion item. I just, um, I just wanted to bring up in, in, in looking at both the alternative equivalent compliance and the major deviation, we don't see a lot of those. When we do, it's always good to kind of look at them and make sure that, um, we're not kind of setting, especially the, the, um, you know, basically creating something that becomes a standard somewhere else. And I, I want to, um, in both of these cases, I actually want to commend both the applicant and staff for the way that they've worked through them in looking at, uh, the alternative equivalent compliance. I did have a question about the trees, but when you mentioned that they were going, no, I don't have a question, sorry. I was going to have a question until you mentioned that there would be additional trees in the Paseo area, which was my concern. So I appreciate you bringing that up and mentioning that. So, uh, that helps me make the findings for that one. And then the major deviation, which is always an issue when we're dealing with adjacent properties. I think that this, the explanation of, uh, the adjacent par- properties and how this was reacting and responding to those, uh, was appropriate. So, uh, in both of these, I can review, uh, and make all of the findings as far as those go. So I just wanted to get that out there on the record in terms of things that we don't see at this body very often. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Munoz, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, the matter of case number LDC twenty-two dash zero 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 five two. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map, conditional use permit, alternative equivalent compliance and major deviation subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And I can make all the findings.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will second that. I can also make all the findings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very, very much. Good luck with your project, Dave. Okay, we'll move on to item number five point three. This is, um, case number LDC two-two dash zero 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 three eight Jacobs Glow Plaza. This is a request for a conditional use permit.
Madam Chair, Mr. Johnson, before we start the presentation on this, I'd like to make a disclosure. This is the appropriate time. For item five point three, LDC twenty-two dash zero 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 three eight Jacobs Glow Plaza and Festival Area. Fellow Commissioners, at the applicant's request, I am disclosing the fact that my wife, Alicia Barber publishes a blog known as the Barber Brief regarding her opinions on certain development in the city of Reno. On this matter, I have sought guidance from the city attorney's office pursuant to NRS two eighty-one A point four two zero four A. The law presumes that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer situation would not be material affected, materially affected by the public officer's commitment in a private capacity to the interests of another, where the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to the other person is not greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter. How do you attorneys do all of this stuff? Here I have a commitment in a private capacity to my wife. Item five point three is a conditional use permit request to allow outside amusement or recreation and live entertainment on a site generally located south of West Fourth Street between Washington and Ralston Streets called the Jacobs Glow Plaza and Festival Area. While my wife recently published opinions in her blog drawing attention to the public potential impact of the project on residents living in the immediate vicinity, the benefit or detriment of the project accruing to my wife is not greater than that accruing to any other member of general public. The independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by my commitment in a private capacity to my wife. And because this is not a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest, I am making this disclosure, but do not intend to recuse myself from this item. Please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We can move into the presentation by the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, uh, planning commissioners. Chair Taylor, for the record, Garrett Gordon, uh, with Lewis Roca tonight representing Jacobs Entertainment. It's funny, I've presented, gosh, over thirty public meetings, town halls, NABS, and never been before this body on the Jacobs item. So I look forward to going through this with you and getting your input tonight. Tonight before you is a, a special use permit, um, submitted by Jacobs Entertainment. The project area is downtown in the urban core, uh, right smack dab middle in the urban core. It's bordered by Fourth Street, a major ulterior to the north, uh, Ralston to the east, which, uh, is adjacent to the Sands Resort Hotel Casino. To the west is Washington Street and the west of that is private property owned by Jacobs. And to the south are some residential units along with, uh, the train trench. About two acre, a little over two acres, uh, of the project area. We're in the downtown mixed-use land use designation in the downtown urban core. And you'll see throughout my presentation, this project is easily supported by master plan and downtown action plan policies. A little background, this, uh, last summer, uh, Jacobs opened the Glow Plaza. You can see here some pictures of the plaza access with all the fourth street. Really to get people more comfortable with coming downtown, coming downtown with their families, coming downtown to recreate, both locals and tourists. It's been a long time, I would say, till any of us who were born and raised here would actually bring their families to West Fourth Street. It was a success. We had events from July to September in twenty twenty-one. There was live music Friday, Saturday night, started with about fifty people, and by word of mouth, it grew to over a hundred and fifty people. And there's food trucks, the Sandside Airstream Bar, and really it was some great momentum into what we're proposing this evening is to expand that Glow Plaza into the festival grounds. And here's a visual of the proposal tonight. It's a conditional use permit, includes two components. One is outdoor amusement, outdoor recreation. The second is live entertainment. Now you'll see in the staff report, both those items are usually approved administratively, that we could have went that, that route with administrative approval, which of course was appealable to city council. But staff recommended, and we certainly agreed in the effort of transparency, public outreach, public input, to come out with a special use permit to bundle those two requests and be before you tonight. Events would include outdoor festivals, concerts, recreation, including making the venue available to community groups such as Art Town. Art Town is always looking for new venues, exciting venues, modern urban venues. This would be perfect for what they accomplish every summer. So a little detail on, on the proposal, it's about a six million dollar investment in expanding that existing Glow Plaza into the larger festival grounds. Brand-new stage, you can see there in the rendering along Washington Street, a new shade structure. We did get feedback during the Glow Plaza events last summer. Gosh, it's hot in the summer, even though most of these events will be dusk and evening. We'd like some more shade. So Jacobs investing in a multimillion dollar shade, modern structure that could be used to shade attendees, new pavers, new landscaping for, for these events. You can see too, it's located right in the middle of the Jacobs Reno SNEON line district, which includes the Glow, not only the Glow Plaza, but Reno's SNEON line. The white wall with the, with the lights you can see can certainly be turned on and off depending on the event. For example, if this was open tomorrow, we'd probably have an Irish band there with a lot of green lights and green music and green beer and getting locals and tourists down here to enjoy the downtown core. We worked hard with staff on really a certain number of conditions. And there's twenty-one conditions, and I'm gonna focus tonight on really the hours and the occupancy and the decibels as relates to this project. The proposal is to have unlimited year-round events smaller and a cap on twenty larger events, which would be between one and four days with a special activity permit. So last summer, the Glow Plaza, we had to come in for every event, apply for a special activity permit. And, you know, frankly, to make a six million dollar investment here, we need some certainty for our entitlement. And so that's why we're before you tonight. But staff said, you know, if you have these larger events, it would still be important to have a special activity level of review, police, fire, public works, planning, which we're certainly agreeable with. Smaller events unlimited, the larger events, we'd have that additional scrutiny. It is worth noting that this area, this zoning, is a twenty-four hour mixed-use zone that has no residential noise standards, none. There's no decibel cap, daytime or nighttime in this area. At twenty-four hour uses, are permitted. Now, of course, we've worked with staff to try to scale that back a little bit to find some compromise for our proposal. But again, that's the baseline you're starting with. We're allowed to do this along with no noise caps. Public outreach, always very important. I've been before council many times on Jacobs items, and again, this first time before you. It was important, first of all, to Councilwoman Breckus to always go to her ward with respect to Ward One, and also Ward Five, Councilwoman Jordan. It was important to Councilwoman Jordan that we also went to Ward Five, even though this wasn't included. So I have been to Ward One, I got feedback. I have been to Ward Five and got feedback. And I also reached out to the Montaz Homewards Association. They've typically been very involved in discussion and noise issues and activity downtown. They declined for me to make a presentation, but again, I've always saying on the record, happy to go and meet with them at any point in time. Festival grounds, landscaping, very important. Close to twenty thousand square feet of landscaped area, sixty-one trees would be required. Sixty-eight trees are being planted. Deciduous, evergreen, shrubs, oriental, grasses, perennials, flowers. I think we can all agree downtown has a little bit of a concrete jungle. What this will do is add some green into downtown, add some trees into downtown, add some greenery into downtown, which again, is supported by the downtown action plan and the downtown master plan policies. With me tonight to answer any questions on the site plan are our local architect. We have our civil engineer here. We also have our traffic consultant here and our acoustical consultant here to answer any questions. As far as traffic, parking, parking's important for events, but let me reemphasize, no parking is required. When the city council approved their zoning code, which became effective in January, no parking is required for any of these downtown uses. However, obviously, we want people to come down there. We want people to, some drive their car, some take Uber, some take public transit, some walk over from the Sands, some walk over from the Eldorado, some walk over from Circus Circus. They get as many bodies we can to enliven this downtown core. So the parking study said what? That within a one to two block radius, we have seven-hundred-and-eighty-five spaces available. And that doesn't even include that yellow overfloor lot. Assuming sixty of the attendees will attend by their personal vehicles and forty will take Uber or get dropped off or walk from their hotel rooms, thirty-seven-hundred attendees can support the current parking situation. So events exceeding thirty-seven-hundred in attendance can still use other on-street parking spaces. Again, thirty-seven-hundred is supported by a two-block area. Certainly, there's ample parking beyond that to support our max capacity of sixty-seven-hundred. But I do put in here a quote from our traffic engineer who says, "Special event vehicle traffic is of a similar magnitude that is typical condition during weekday evenings and weekend days in downtown environment." Right? That's the plan. We're an event city. We have the downtown river park. We have the Italian festival. We have the chicken wing festival. We have Hall August Nights. We have, for us locals, close your ears, street vibrations. We have a lot of great, exciting events, and this is what we're proposing, is no different and would create no undue impacts or unnecessary impacts that any of those events have done historically. Proposed festival grounds, transit routes. I know Commissioner Villanueva has called out numerous times of how does your development support master plan transit policies? This hits these policies right on the head. If you see our location there in green, the Glow Plaza, over seven fixed bus lines around this area. Over twenty fixed bus stops around this area. Two policies, two master plan policies I pulled out are exactly aimed at what we're doing here. Promote new development and redevelopment in centers and corridors where access to transit services, reduce vehicle miles traveled, and encourage walkability. It's exactly what we're proposing here. Number two, again, more transit-oriented development policy, master plan policies. Prioritize transit-oriented development in regional unemployment centers along urban corridors. It's exactly where we are in an urban corridor along Fourth Street and in other locations that are currently served by or plan to be served by high-frequency transit service. There's already service here. Hopefully, a lot of people use that service, but this is, this proposal is certainly supported by the master plan transit policies. So kind of recap other conditions. There's twenty-one conditions. These are the ones that are focused on hours, occupancy, and decibels. So events with site occupancy under two thousand, we have the right to do unlimited events. We have onsite security, private security paid for by the applicant to monitor, monitor and record the attendance. We have to provide a list of these events to the city within thirty days, which makes sense. Hours of operation would be from six to eleven, Sunday through Thursday. I think the staff report said Monday through Thursday. It should say Sunday through Thursday. And six AM to midnight on Friday and Saturday. Amplified sound is restricted until ten PM for these smaller events. And noise levels cannot exceed seventy-five decibels at outer property lines. We were a little perplexed by this condition giving existing decibels peak at eighty-five decibels. So we're a little worried about how that's gonna work with setting false alarms and trigger and setting a level that existing sound is higher than the level we're being required to comply with. However, I'm hopeful that that next, following, last bullet point, where it's averaged on an hour period, gets us, you know, the cushion and the availability to operate under this condition. So it'd be seventy-five decibels and not peak over an hour period. So the larger events, over two thousand, that's a condition. What we're proposing to you tonight are three modifications to the city's conditions of approval. This is one of them. We'd like to add a condition that this occupancy could be increased up to thirty-seven-hundred. Where does that number come from? That number comes from the parking analysis, traffic analysis that was done by our consultant that says there is the ability to park folks up to thirty-seven-hundred occupancy at this level. So we'd like that to be set. Staff was a little concerned and said, well, parking's great, it's not required, but we need you to do a traffic study to confirm that. So part of the condition would be, we'd have to do a traffic study scoped by the city's engineering department, submitted, approved by all departments in order to raise that. But we would just ask the ability to have the chance to raise that if a traffic study supports it. We can do twenty events per year. Again, each event can be between one and four days. Onsite security. Each event will require a special activity permit. So that's also important in making sure there is an additional level of review for larger events. Special activity permit review, police, fire, public works, community development, health. Anyone and everyone at the city will have a chance to review that permit to make sure the twenty events, the larger ones, will be, meet code and will be appropriate. Events may exceed seventy-five decibels, which makes sense. Hours of operation are from six to eleven on Sunday through Thursday, and staff agreed that we could be able to go to midnight on Friday and Saturday. However, staff is recommending amplified sound is capped at ten PM. So it's capped at ten PM for smaller events and for larger events. We're respectfully asking you tonight to raise that to eleven on Friday and Saturday just for the larger events, given staff has given us an extra hour to operate on those weekends in order to have a viable venue where you have a, a group or, or a band come in who, who, you know, start at, say, eight-thirty or nine. Rather than being capped at ten, we have the ability to go till eleven. And you would say, well, is that gonna work? I mean, is this decibel level gonna work? Is that amplified sound gonna work? I'm not gonna, you know, sit up here tonight and tell you I know anything about decibels, but we're gonna try our best to comply. But what happens if we don't? Or what happens if you raise that amplified sound to eleven and you didn't realize that the impact it caused was an impact that we should have thought of? This is current code. It allows you, the planning commission, to revoke any permit, conditional use permit. And on what grounds? If one, I highlighted them, number actually B, if we're conducting use on the land contrary to the conditions. So if we're not meeting the conditions, you can revoke our permit. Number two, or number C here, letter C, if we're compliant with the conditions, but we're creating a public nuisance, you can also revoke it. So I'm asking you tonight to give us a chance to go up till eleven on the weekends. And if one, there's a condition we're not complying with of the other twenty-one. Or two, we get more, a lot more complaints or concerns. We don't think you will. This is the downtown core, but if you do. Number two on the bottom says, the body who approved this use permit, this planning commission, can bring us back in and revoke or change that condition. So give us a chance, let us be successful. For some reason, there's a, an impact we're not thinking of, we can come back in and change it. Master plan policies. I have a minute twenty left. I have three slides of master plan policies. Let me go through them real quickly. Community development. It says, "Kirk, certainly, a community venue which will attract visitors of a once-neglected portion of downtown." Arts and recreation and tourism. This will absolutely revitalize downtown Reno. Jacobs has already made an over four million dollar investment in the Burning Man artwork, the concrete pedestals, the landscaping, the fencing, the replica signs. That investment continues to revitalize this downtown core. Arts and culture, we have the art, we want the music, we want the activity again to grow and bring in artists and creative entrepreneurs. Urban revitalization, absolutely. Tourism and entertainment, yes. Arts and culture, yes. Public spaces, this will be a place for the public to come, to recreate, hopefully year-round, and gather right in our downtown Reno. Pedestrian realm and community amenities. I'll skip down to the bottom, the downtown action plan. Absolutely says throughout it, we need to revitalize underutilized properties for arts, entertainment, and events. So we ask you to make the motion with the three conditions that I, with the two conditions I mentioned, and one more that makes sure we put a website address on our signs so locals and the surrounding property owners will know when the events are coming. Finally, here's your downtown action plan. There was a study done in twenty-twenty and twenty-seventeen. On the right-hand side were what our community wanted in downtown. They want a clean downtown, a safe downtown, a vibrant downtown, walkable downtown, modern downtown, arts downtown. I could keep going, my time is up. This hits exactly what this community asked for in the downtown action plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Nathan, do you have a presentation?
I sure do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you all see this?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. Michelle, do I have access?
You should. I see it now.
All right, can you all see that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you just need to make it bigger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thanks for your patience. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner with Development Services. Also here tonight is Reno Police Department Lieutenant Ryan Connolly, Senior Code Enforcement Officer Cindy Gold Blanco, as well as Ashley Turney representing the Business License Division. So as Garrett mentioned, this is a request for a conditional use permit for amusement or recreation outside and for live entertainment on a two-point-three-two acre site. I think something for the commission to understand is that this is a permanent land use. It doesn't run with the applicant. It runs with the land. And so this entitlement, if approved, would be a permanent entitlement to allow live entertainment and outdoor recreation uses. A little bit of background, there's been over two hundred special activity permits issued for the site over the past few years. What the special activity permit process does is allows staff to review applications for land uses that are not otherwise entitled. So currently, this, this is a relatively vacant site. When the applicant would wish to hold activities on the site, that's done through a special activity permit. If any street closures or things of that nature, that's a special event permit. All of these are privileged license, reviewed by staff and analyzed for any needs of services that might be related to the request. So the conditional use permit would allow for a permanent stage, sound over seventy-five decibels. The special, special events are through Reno Municipal Code restricted to seventy-five decibels. Special activity permits, the policy is to maintain that seventy-five decibel threshold for special activities. And the conditional use permit would allow events under two thousand by right. That, that's as conditioned. That was through staff analysis through multiple divisions within the city, under, with the understanding that two thousand, which was submitted in the application and in their parking study, is a, is a reasonable threshold for, for smaller events that wouldn't trigger additional services, city services, or traffic impacts. Staff has received building permits for site improvements. They're currently under review. It's not subject to a conditional use permit except for the permanent stage. And special activity permits for summer concert series has been received to allow summer events with amplified sound and live entertainment throughout the summer. So that, that is separate from the conditional use permit that is being applied for today. The conditional use permit would be a permanent entitlement as, as submitted, that entitlement doesn't have any restrictions on the, the number of events. And so this, this conditional use permit as proposed would allow for live entertainment and outdoor festival activity by right. So key issues in staff analysis were land use compatibility and master plan policies, noise, safety and security, and potential impacts to, to city services. The site is within the mixed-use downtown northwest quadrant zone, which, which, as Garrett mentioned, does allow for twenty-four hour activity. does allow for 24-hour activity. However, this use, the outdoor recreation and live entertainment does require a conditional use permit. So land use and compatibility in the master plan, special event and activity permits, as I mentioned, are restricted to 75 decibels onsite with amplified sound ceasing at 10:00 p.m. Staff's recommendation would be to maintain that policy for live entertainment with amplified sound ceasing at 10:00 p.m. The condition number 12 would allow 20 events per year to exceed the decibel thresholds. That was in the applicant's application material that they would anticipate 20 large events per year to exceed that decibel limit. Events under 2,000 would be permitted by right. And so, again, staff's analysis regarding traffic, police services, things of that nature, under 2,000 would not typically require additional city services or impacts to, to city services. And staff is comfortable with that 2,000 occupancy by right. A special activity permit would be required for events larger than that. And what's entitled than that? You know, it's, it's about a $100 application that gives staff the, the ability to review the events or the type of events and anticipated impacts and apply any additional conditions as needed for that particular event. With a conditional use permit approval by right, without that, there could be events held on the site that, that may impact city services and cost the city, you know, the city would, would be on the hook for subsidizing those events. So 2,000, again, was, was reviewed by various city departments and determined to be a reasonable number that that would not create impacts above. So smaller events like food trucks and farmers markets and things like that wouldn't have to go through the, the process of the special activity permit, but larger events would. So over 2,000, as condition, would require a special activity permit. The site has capacity for, you know, a little over 6,700 patrons. That's just 500 under what the Reno Event Center has. Just to give you a bit of perspective, the site does have capacity for large events. While they're, they're not proposing that in their application, a conditional use permit based on the occupancy could potentially allow really significant large events, which would be subject to special activity permits and/or special event permits, which would, you know, provide staff the opportunity to mitigate any impacts. As Garrett mentioned, there are numerous policies that support tourism and the arts, particularly in the downtown district. As far as what zoning allows here, it, it really is a hodgepodge. The mixed-use downtown districts allow for pretty much, you know, the gamut of, of land uses. This particular use does require an approved conditional use permit. Regarding noise, safety, and security, condition number nine restricts hours of operation from 6:00 to 11:00 Monday through Thursday and 6:00 to 12:00 Friday and Saturday. Condition number 10 addresses amplified sound, keeping that consistent with special activity permits. Condition number 11 would require sound monitoring equipment onsite. This is consistent with what was done on the Eddy. Of course, that's a much different scale. After, gosh, three years of, of review on that, they were allowed up to 500 people. Again, this is a little under 7,000 capacity potential. So the sound monitoring equipment onsite would regulate and monitor activity. And that is something above and beyond what a special activity permit would do. Yes, we have that code provision of 75 decibels, but that really is contingent upon code enforcement coming out and enforcing that typically after hours. And so with this condition, sound monitoring equipment would be onsite, available so that staff and, and the applicant or the, the property owner could monitor and maintain and ensure compliance with those conditions. Condition number 13 through 15 address security and queuing plans. And again, the larger events would be further reviewed with a special activity permit as condition so that fire and, and RPD, planning, and all, all the relevant agencies can review and ensure that any, any impacts are sufficiently mitigated. So potential impacts to city services, again, under 2,000 attendees are not anticipated to impact city services. Special activity permits over 2,000 would ensure potential impacts are addressed as needed. And condition number 17 requires a comprehensive traffic study, not, not a, not a parking study, but a, but a comprehensive traffic study to ensure that any impacts regarding traffic with access to the site are mitigated. And that's, that is going to be primarily with freeway access from Keystone and Sierra Street and the overall impacts to parking in the general area. Garrett is absolutely correct. The parking, there are no parking requirements downtown. However, this site, you know, has capacity for about 6,700 attendees at maximum occupancy, and that could have potential impacts with traffic. So that traffic study would be required before, and any mitigations proposed with that would be implemented. You know, to, to the, the comment that Garrett made regarding special activities and, and events downtown, yes, they are. There are numerous. We're an events town, we all know that. They are done through special event and special activity licenses, permits. And the impacts, including traffic, are evaluated with those permits. You know, we, we can have numerous events downtown at any given time, and those are all coordinated. If we didn't have that condition, the, the, you know, allowed, allowed by right conditional use permit could, could significantly impact that. So that is staff's concern, and that's where staff's recommendations for conditions of approval came from. We did receive numerous public comments, concerns primarily related to noise and traffic. Staff can make the applicable findings and recommends approval of the conditional use permit, subject to all conditions as proposed in your staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I and the other staff members are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Let's bring it back to the commission for other disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Munoz and move down from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Munoz, for the record. I met with the, I met with the developer. I walked the area, I've read, and went over the emails and had several phone calls with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site. I don't live that far, but I think it is, is it Ward 1? I think it's Ward 1. So Ward, so I, yeah, Ward 1, I live in Ward 1. And I read emails, responded to emails.
Commissioner Draculich met with the applicant and walked the site, also read and received emails.
Commissioner Johnson, in addition to my previous disclosure, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, I visited the site, met with the applicant's representative onsite and had a subsequent conversation and received and read the emails.
Commissioner Veltto.
Commissioner Veltto, same disclosures.
Okay, Commissioner Taylor, I met with applicant's representative, I visited the site, I received emails and voicemails, and I watched the Ward 1 NAB meeting in preparation for this. Let's see, Michelle, I think we have some public comment for this item. We are going to start with in-person public comment, then we're going to go to Zoom public comment. And lastly, we'll play the voicemails. And I believe Commissioner Draculich is going to handle the in-person public comment, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Draculich, we do have Gary Cecil here. He wishes to make a statement, not in favor or in opposition, but concerned, as he stated. Come on up, Gary, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Gary Cecil, I'm a downtown resident, and I am a member of the Ward 5 NAB. The Globe Plaza, as I see it, is the first of many entertainment-related projects to come from the applicant. I truly wish Jacobs Entertainment a lot of success, and I hope their plans are positive for the downtown residents. I see one of the most important roles of this commission to act as a neutral buffer between the entertainment and permanent resident stakeholders in the downtown mixed-use district. Residents, especially those living in close proximity to the Globe Plaza, need your help to mitigate the impacts on our everyday lives. And by close proximity, I mean about 50 to 100 people live the distance between where you're sitting and I'm standing. I'd like to thank, first of all, Nathan Gilbert. The city staff, I think they did a good job, decent set of conditions, more than I initially hoped for. So good job, guys. That said, I respectfully ask you to consider four different or three different additional concerns that I don't think are fully addressed in your staff report. The excellent sound study demonstrated that for all seven residential buildings right on top of the Globe Plaza, the predicted noise levels will exceed the city's residential standards. Yet, condition 12 okay's this for up to 20 special events per year. Moreover, the condition doesn't set an upper decibel limit. Please listen to these noise impacts further. I remain concerned about queuing. I walked the sidewalk on Fourth Street, did a few measurements, and it's arguably not wide enough for a couple to queue next to each other inside a stanchion control device and still allow passing pedestrians in other than single file. Also, the alley on the south side of the plaza, the one about the distance that we're apart, it would be like having people lining up against the back wall of your house, especially for the people in the Sarrazin Arms in the Onyx Building. They're that close. Finally, please include an added condition for an annual public city review of this permit, at least for the first year, or on the side of caution. I see this Globe Plaza an experiment, hopefully a good one. But when I ask for a comparable existing license, Vice Mayor Jordan referenced the Eddy. However, the projected scale of the Globe Plaza and the very close proximity to existing residences makes this a more significant and more impactful project. And nobody really knows how it will affect downtown. An annual public review of all downtown bars and nightclubs has just been wisely implemented by the city council. A Palladio resident pointed out that there is an annual city review of the Eddy. Please include the same safeguard in the Globe Plaza permit. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Draculich, I don't see any public comment on my side. Michelle? Anybody else in the room like to come up and speak? I think we're good, Madam Chair.
I think we're good here in chambers. We do have Art Wrangle on Zoom. We're going to move him over. Art, can you hear us? Art?
Art, you're muted.
Yeah. Art?
Can you hear me?
Barely. Did you wish to make public comment on this item?
Sure, I can, yes, I do.
Okay, you'll have three minutes. So please state your name for the record.
Yeah, Art Wrangle, 255 North Sierra Street, live in the Montage. Relative to the findings, one of the things that was not mentioned is master plan policy 3.1B housing options in, in, in the master plan. Talks about a thriving downtown university district. Encourage a variety of housing options at diverse price points to support a more diversified workforce and composition. I know the city did incredibly good job of soliciting input on the master plan. I, I know my, because I've written them myself. However, it's quite behind on the implementation tools. Specifically, I, I know that the the zoning code was recently amended, but it treats the downtown residents no different than it did 40 years ago. The master plan encourages residential in the downtown area, yet standard, and you heard Jared say, there's no noise standards. There are no parking standards, you know, all of these things. And I'd like, we'd like to see the code amended to provide, to treat us like residents. We understand we live in an entertainment zone. They can both coexist. Otherwise, we're going to be incompatible uses. So we acted, ask that you do that. And I would support Mr. Cecil's issue of requiring a annual review of this, of the, the conditional use permit. Thank you, I think that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom that wishes to make public comment? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have Ivy that wishes to make public comment. Just a moment. Ivy, can you hear us? We can't hear you, Ivy. You're not connected to audio, it seems. Hi Ivy, can you hear us okay?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay, you have three minutes Okay, you have three minutes to make public comment and go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm Ivy Antonovich. I live at the Riverside Artist Lofts. I'm here because I was told that the Eddy is being used as some sort of success story and motivation to put the Globe project forward. As a resident of the Riverside for 15 years, I can tell you, this has not been a success story for us. It has been nothing less than a nightmare. I attended all the planning commission meetings where Mr. Stitzer made all kinds of promises to city council and you. Ambient music would only be played out of speakers from the inside of his bar. And every night, they lug out these huge, you know, tripod speakers that does not play ambient music. They play techno dance music and rap. So, you know, at midnight, trying to go to sleep, I'm hearing the N-word, the F-word, every alphabet word that, you know, you can't say publicly. As far as what was said about residential buildings being far away from their amphitheater, I live blocks away from Wingfield Park, and when they have special events, it drowns out my stereo, you know, my TV entertainment. Mr. Stitzer finally got what he wanted. He's got his 500 capacity, 2:00 a.m., and it exceeds his decibel levels all the time. I invested in my own decibel levels and I've recorded decibel levels into the upper 80s. The special events permits, oh my God, those are hellacious and unbearable. It is unconscionable to allow a project like this to go forward without any kind of noise ordinance. It's, we, I've been here 15 years. I used to call this my castle on the river. We've dubbed it Hell House. With rents being as high as they are, we're kind of locked into where we're at. We can't leave. It's just terrible, and I really, really hope that you put more consideration into the people who are going to go through absolute hell, living through what they are proposing. As somebody who lives right next to the Riverside, please come to me, ask me, I can tell you the nightmares that exist. You know, it gives business owners an unfair power when there's no noise ordinance. They're the ones that define how loud something is or, you know, how disruptive it can be. You give them an inch, I promise you, they will take a mile, just like the Eddy has. And I guess that's about all I have to say, other than please consider what you're doing to the people that have invested in this area. It's shameful to consider it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ivy. Is there anybody else on Zoom that wishes to make public comment? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, nobody is raising their hand, so we'll transition into the voicemail.
My name is Art Rangel. I live at 255 North Sierra Street, Reno, Nevada. I'm calling to reference to item, planning commission item 5.3, March 16th, 2022, regarding the Jacob's Globe Plaza outdoor live entertainment item. Few comments. One is relative to finding the fact how, I don't understand how an outdoor live entertainment venue can promote Master Plan Policy 3.1B, housing options in GP3 thriving downtown university district, which reads, encourage a variety of housing options at diverse price points to support a more diversified workforce and composition of residents in downtown. Outdoor entertainment just doesn't seem compatible with that.
Michelle, are you still working on those? I don't hear anything on the Zoom call.
Hang on just a second.
Proposes onsite security.
We lost audio on this side.
Michelle, can you hear me?
Yeah, we lost audio on the voicemail.
Okay.
It was a voicemail from Art Rangel, who also just made public comment that they were forwarded to the planning commission and it has been entered as part of the record, so. I think we are good. We don't have any more public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. And I know it's about 2:30 in the morning. I want to make sure Commissioner Veltow stays with us, so do you want to start, do you have questions, Commissioner Veltow?
I do. I do. Thank you so much.
You're muted. Okay, there you go.
Thank you. I want to start by asking questions of Nathan. Nathan, thanks for the presentation tonight. You had a data point on the slide that said that there'd already been 200 special activity permits issued for the site. Were, do you happen to know how many calls for service there were during events where there were special activity permits?
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have calls for service data. I do know that there were code enforcement complaints related to some of the summer events from the condominiums to the north. But that's the only information that I had available.
Do you have any information about kind of a trend that you saw with with any issues during those events?
I think I see Ryan Connolly here with RPD. I can only speak to the code enforcement complaints that I saw with special activity data. But Ryan oversees special activities and events for RPD and might be able to comment further.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you for having me. For the record, Ryan Connolly, Lieutenant with Reno Police Department, assigned to the Special Events Unit. I don't have numbers for you, unfortunately. I can say anecdotally, the large event we had there with a band, a live band, over the fall and spring, street vibrations. We did receive calls for service about excessive noise from the apartments to the north, the multi-story towers there. Probably two or three calls, separate calls each night we were there complaining about the loud noise reaching their apartments.
Is that pretty common, though, for events that happen downtown? I got to imagine that happens during street vibrations.
Yeah, it's pretty common. We get similar complaints from areas around the ACES Stadium when they hold events. Those are, those events were permitted, street vibrations was permitted as well, so once I explained that to the complainants, then they were, they weren't happy, but they understood that it was a permitted event and it was being monitored by city staff.
Great, thank you. Nathan, so the site capacity is at 6,700 roughly. What's the logic for having a right up to 2,000 and not higher? That seems smaller than I would have guessed, given the size of the lot.
So, when we were reviewing the application, we were trying to find a median, right? Where, what's a reasonable threshold for activities on site that wouldn't necessarily require a special activity permit? 2,000 happened to be the number submitted in the application as a typical event. But I think Lieutenant Connolly can speak on RPD's analysis for outdoor events with alcohol happens to coincide with 2,000 occupancy. We were trying to find a, you know, a reasonable threshold for smaller events that wouldn't impact city services without that kind of discretionary review. And 2,000 was the number in the application with the, you know, parking analysis and noted as a typical event. It also coincides with RPD's typical, typical review. Now, Reno Fire Department has their own thresholds, and that's in code. This conditionally use permit wouldn't affect that for what they need. Also, there are thresholds for, standard for special activity and event permits, requiring EMS services and things of that nature. So, 2,000 seemed like a reasonable number.
Lieutenant, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, thank you once again, Ryan Connolly, for the record. So, yeah, like Nathan said, the 2,000 was originally in the original permit, and that happened to coincide with what my office takes a look at when we receive these permits come across my desk. The NRS says that any special event with alcohol that has over 2,500 people on scene is required to have additional EMS. So, we kind of look at that as if the state legislature is saying 2,500 is a number where you need to start having additional resources. It's kind of the same number for us where we look at it. Doesn't mean that we staff every event. If I staffed every event that came across my desk with, you know, 2,500 or 2,000 people on it, my guys would be burnt out in a matter of weeks with all the overtime. So, it's just a number that we have where we take a second look at when the permit comes across my desk, make sure we're comfortable with it. Doesn't mean that every event over 2,000 is staffed. And there's plenty that aren't staffed, but it's a number that we take extra time to make sure we review and are comfortable with.
Do you think that review process typically works?
Yeah, I think it does. It helps us. So, a perfect example, the ACES Stadium had a couple concerts back to back. One of them was a Philharmonic band, I think it was the Reno Philharmonic or associated with them. That came across my desk. We didn't staff that one. A couple of weeks later, it was another live band and gave us the opportunity to look at the band, contact other agencies that had that band recently and found out that there was a whole multitude of issues. And it turned out to be one of the, one of the events we staffed and had numerous fights and issues with. So, just having the process where, once it reaches the threshold, it crosses our desk and gets a chance to look at it is important. Like I said, we don't staff every one of them. I don't know what percentage is, but it's low of the ones we do staff that reach that threshold. But taking a second look at them is important in my office.
Great, thank you. There was a, part of the proposal has sound monitoring equipment, and I don't know too much about how that equipment works. So, Nathan, can you tell us how that equipment works and where it would be in relation to the stage?
Yeah, so that, as conditioned, that sound monitoring equipment would be on all project perimeters to monitor that. I think the only example I can think of is the Eddy. And I think Cindy Goblanco, Senior Code Enforcement Officer, is available, and I think she has really firsthand insight into how that is monitored and how that works.
That'd be great.
Good evening. So, Cindy Goblanco, for the record, I am the Senior Code Enforcement Officer for the City of Reno, and I have about 20 years of experience enforcing code for the community. We do have this audio equipment. It is installed at the Eddy. It does have a recording device on it. They send us copies of the recording on a weekly basis, so we can take a look. If it matches the complaints that we get, then it gives us the ability to enforce upon them, and it keeps them honest. The equipment is located at the perimeters of the property and does measure the decibels.
And what would happen if, say, the Eddy were not to, were to have a decibel level that was higher than what was allowed?
Well, we take a look at that. We would contact the complaining party, because that's usually how we become aware of the issues. Then we would take a look at that. They initially would probably get a courtesy letter or a warning to that effect, and then we would start to monitor the events on our own.
Could you eventually, is there a mechanism to prevent, say, the Eddy from hosting events or operating if they couldn't comply with the decibel requirement?
Of course, and it was just like Mr. Gordon pointed out, you know, we could go for a revocation of this permit.
So, I'm generally concerned with that, the decibel levels at that area, because when I walk that area, it seemed very loud. I want to say there's like a train that goes by. There's, you know, there's a major roadway right there where there's cars going by. How do you prevent the decibel monitor or the sound monitor from picking up other noise and that triggering the requirement or exceeding the requirement?
Right, so we have our own sound meters, and we are trained in using those. So, we would go out to the site and take an ambient reading during the event. And again, we always have to respond after we get a complaint, so it's not necessarily proactive, although it can be. We usually are reactive, so we go out to the event. We would stage out there, monitor, take measurements on the ambient sound, and then take a consistent reading during the event to see if the noise exceeded the allowed decibels.
Are you concerned that, all right, do you happen to know what the decibel allowance is for other venues in the Reno Sparks area that have live music?
No, I'm not familiar with those, sir.
Thank you. And then, sorry, Nathan, I have a few more questions for you. There's a, there was a proposal from someone, one of the public commentators about an annual review. Are there other contexts where you've seen the commission put in place something similar to an annual review?
Commissioner Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner, the only entitlement that I'm aware of was the Eddy, and that came back for three or four years for annual review. Staff wouldn't recommend that. This is an entitlement, and we want to make sure that the conditions are appropriate or not. And, you know, if that means scaling back the comfort level and then coming back to request a condition amendment to, you know, to increase that, whatever, whatever the allowance would be, that would be staff's preference to, you know, start small and go big. And that's essentially what the Eddy did, but what that, what that created, and that was, that was a condition made by council to come back every three years. It really isn't an entitlement, and frankly, it's subject to the operator. And I want to, I want to make sure everybody understands this isn't, this entitlement is not for Jacob's Entertainment. This is for the land, so it could be a good operator or a bad operator. So, we want to make sure that the conditions are appropriate as they are.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other question for you, Nathan. I really appreciate it. Do other folks have questions for Nathan? I have some questions for the applicant, but I'm happy to let other folks jump in before I ask Garrett questions.
And let's ask Commissioner Gower virtually. Do you have questions for Nathan?
I do not. I think Commissioner Veltow covered my questions for staff at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to chambers and start with Commissioner Munoz, please, and just move on. I can't necessarily see if somebody has their hand up with questions for Nathan.
Commissioner Dracula, yeah, I mean, I guess I want to piggyback on the acoustics, so we might as well keep it going. But some of those questions will lean over to the applicant as well. So, I guess since we have Nathan in front of us, the applicant mentioned that, you know, they came to the table with this proposal more or less to, you know, compromise and be collaborative, but he noted that there is no decibel limit currently in place. Did I understand what he was saying there?
Yes, that's true. As far as Title 18, the zoning code, there is no, there is no sound standard. That is only applicable to residential zoning districts, so that would be single-family or multifamily districts. It is understood that there are residential occupancies, so that is a bit of a gray area as far as code. So, staff's approach was to stay consistent with special activity and special event permits. Special events, it is in Reno Municipal Code for that 75 decibel limit on, be maintained on the site. And special activity permits adhere to that as well. So, with this conditional use permit, as conditioned, that would maintain that practice with sound monitoring equipment, which really would help facilitate adherence to those policies rather than on a code complaint basis. It would allow monitoring to ensure that those standards are being met. But it is, the conditions as recommended are based on special activity policy.
Okay, and why I still have you there, too, I guess, mostly trying to understand and grasp, you know, the residence right by, notably the Onyx, which is just south southwest corner of the lot, and then the RHA Housing to the other southern east side. Obviously, the residence is to the north as well, but that 75 decibels, you know, whether it's 10 or 11, if that's what the applicant wants. But, I mean, do we have any complaints coming from them, or what can we expect if either condition is approved?
Well, that's difficult to say. You know, again, they have had over 200 events on site. There were a handful of registered complaints that staff is aware of. Actually, they were, they were from the condominiums to the north of the site. I wasn't able to find any recorded complaints from adjacent property owners, but, you know, if there were, it would be subject to that 75 decibel threshold.
Okay, yeah, and I wanted to go over the acoustic study more in depth, and it sounds like that might be more apt for the applicant. So, if anybody wants to ask Nathan any more questions?
I do. Thanks, Nathan. Can you describe for us what a privileged license is, how that works, and kind of what that entails?
So, a special, a special activity permit would be required if a property owner, a private property owner, wanted to hold an event that would otherwise not be allowed or entitled by the zoning code. So, these happen frequently. They have happened, you know, over 200 times on this subject site. It's a, it's a process where they submit an application to the Business License Division. Ashley Turney is here. an application to the Business License Division. Ashley Turney is here to speak on any specifics with that. But it, it is a permit. It's a, it is a privilege. And again, that, that 75 decibel limit on site is standard policy. Typically, they would follow special event requirements for closing at 10 o'clock, but they can be extended and operations have been extended on this site with previous special activity permits to 11:00 p.m. previously. A special event permit is required for these kind of activities on any public property or any activities that require closure of streets. And so sometimes, you know, a special activity, RPD or FIRE, whomever, Public Works, might review it and say, hey, these impacts are substantial enough. We're going to need a road closure. That would be, that would transition to a special event permit. So a little nuanced, special activities for activities outside of what would normally be allowed on private property and a special event permit would be on public property.
Okay, and are there any examples of other, I mean, I know we had the Eddy, but are there any other examples of these permanent privilege licenses? So like this, this entitlement, actually, you know, let me take a step back. Can you describe what an entitlement is?
An entitlement as far as a conditional use permit, that would, you know, again, allow for a permanent stage on this site that would not, not normally be allowed. It's a permanent stage for live entertainment. As requested, it would allow for up to 20 events that would exceed protocol, that 75 decibel limit. And it would allow for, as conditioned, you know, up to 2,000 attendees for outdoor activities, festival areas, without going through that special activity permitting process. That's what this conditional use permit would do.
And you said you guys had counsel here? Because I think this next one's a legal question. I don't know if it's applicant's counsel or is it your counsel, but it's applicant's counsel, right? That's here. Am I wrong about that?
I believe Garrett Gordon is, is an attorney and he is the applicant's representative.
Okay, I'll ask the question and then we can figure out who's the best person to answer. How does an entitlement differentiate between, you know, a privilege license or a special event permit? When you have this entitlement, how did the rights change with respect to, you know, coming and getting a permit versus, you know, losing the opportunity to have this privileged license?
So for, for example, if there weren't any conditions, a conditional use permit for allowing live entertainment and outdoor activity would allow them to do whatever they want, whenever they want. That's why there are conditions of, yeah, that's why there are conditions of approval. If they didn't come through with this entitlement, they would have to go through the special activity process every time that they wanted to do an event on this location, which is what they've done for the past several years.
Okay.
If I could clarify, also add to that, is that okay, Commissioner?
Absolutely, yeah, please.
So Jacobs Entertainment has purchased this land for about, can you hear me, am I, for about $9 million. The improvements will be another $6 million. So a special activity permit, as you point out, is case by case, privileged and discretionary. So Mr. Jacobs and Jacobs Entertainment, right, would be a fool to invest $6 million worth of improvements with a new beautiful stage, a new beautiful shade structure, landscaping, paving, fencing, with the uncertainty on a special activity application on a case by case basis, whether one is ever denied. So to make that investment in downtown's core and compliant with the downtown action plan, we're seeking this permanent entitlement with conditions and trying to find a balance of, we would submit to you up to 3,700 people of what's by right and what's requires a special activity permit for the larger event. So we thought this was a compromise, including my, my conditions. But again, that 3,700 is critical to be able, the ability to go up to that in order to have a viable project and substantiate that $6 million investment.
And what would happen if you guys continued to violate, you know, these conditions and, you know, code enforcement was out there and we decided to bring this forward? What kind of process would ultimately have to happen for you guys to, to lose that privilege or that entitlement?
I put, for the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you for the question. I put that code section in my presentation, which is very clear, that if we don't comply with our conditions and/or we're a nuisance. So even if we comply with all our condition, conditions, there is still that provision in code that says if you're a public nuisance, regardless of the conditions compliance, we can still be called back. And that would be before the body that approves this use permit, which would be this planning commission. So we would get notice of a revocation proceeding. We would come before this body. Your staff would identify all the non-compliance or public nuisance issues and you'd have a right to amend the conditions. You'd have a right to revoke our permit. You'd have a right to add additional conditions. You have ultimate flexibility given our use permit is discretionary.
Okay, and what, so what other venues or entities in Reno Sparks have this type of entitlement to basically an unlimited right to, you know, these events? Do you know of any or does, maybe this is for Nathan, which is I guess why we, I had originally, yeah, I meant to ask that initially, but I backtrack. So do you have any examples of other entities other than the Eddy?
Yes, yeah, the City of Sparks Outdoor Amphitheater has capacity for about 8,500 people. They're limited to 10 events per year and I believe three or four special events, you know, like the Rip Cook Off and things like that. Every single activity there is in Sparks is required to have a special event permit. That's how they do it in the City of Sparks. Another example besides the Eddy would be the Reno Experience District. They have an interior plaza that was, has some, some limited, you know, event space and that sort of thing. And that was, that was approved administratively based on, based on the scale. It was a fairly smaller scale application.
Okay, and then for the, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, if I can, I mean, this is, I would say, nothing new to downtown, right? This isn't a unicorn or a new use of having thousands of people come to an event downtown. The National Bowling Stadium has thousands of people show up to their events. The Reno Event Center has concerts, thousands of people that the downtown infrastructure can support. The Aces Baseball Stadium has 6,500 seats and they didn't even have to provide parking and everything seems to work out there with fireworks, with soccer leagues, with other events. I know you and ours, Nevada Wolfpack are coming down to play at that field with Oregon State. Thousands of people will show up there. So to your point, what's unique about this is the private investment by a private individual on their private land to do an unbelievably modern concert and entertainment venue that we think will draw locals and tourists back downtown to the west side of downtown. That's been critically missing in our, in our, in our development of West Fourth Street.
I understand what you're saying. I have other questions. You're, I get where you're coming from. I think it's apples to oranges to compare this to a convention space or a bowling center that brings in tourists from international places, national places. Nevertheless, I'll, I'll stop there. I have other questions. I'll let others speak because a lot of my other questions go to safety and security concerns. So I'll let, I'll let someone else go for now.
All right, well, Commissioner Dracula, Madam Chair, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Don't say down. Just because I want to keep diving into the acoustics because my experience when visiting the site was unique. Any topics you want to touch on, but notably, if you want to start with, it's Figure Three in the acoustic study. It's the one with all the pretty colors. And kind of re-explain to me, you guys did your own study and you amplified some sound for some set of time and these are where we got those measurements. What decibels were you, or you know, what sound volume or decibels were you pushing out of that stage location to acquire these numbers? I'm just trying to understand if you have, you know, your biggest event, one of the 20, and it's popular and the band is notably loud, it's amplified. And if we were to give you your condition till 11 o'clock, what was that sound in this study? How's that parallel?
All right, for the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. Our sound consultant is here, so he can step up if I miss anything. But in regards to that Figure Three that you mentioned, where the stage is shown, there was music played in the low 90 decibels. And playing that, amplifying that music, you can see the decibel levels of the surrounding property lines. And so that's what worried us frankly of that 75 decibel cap, even for smaller events, is because you can see on that property line, it would hit it at 78. So I agree that sound is difficult. We will do our best to comply with that. Of course, I would assert to you, Sparks has no decibel levels for any events. Because in talking to their staff, they said, it's so difficult to enforce it from ambient noise to we have a train, you know, we have a train going by, we have diesel trucks on Fourth Street, you know, the sands is growing, is going to have activities. So we would submit to you, no decibel level would be appropriate for any event because that's the current code downtown. But in the event of smaller events, we are going to do our best to comply. But, you know, it's uncertain how that'll work out, to be honest.
And so help me out, if you, like I said, my scenario with a band playing and you're pumping 90 decibels, is that what the band or what you, you know, Jacobs would want out of that performance? Or do they intend to play louder because that's what is successful there? Because obviously there's a point where the volume's too low and you lack success or entertainment value if it's not loud enough. So what, what are you guys hoping to achieve or what's your intentions, you know, what are you going to, I guess, kind of do there?
Let me speak on half of Jacobs' intentions and then maybe call the sound consultant up to address sound.
Okay.
But Jacobs' intentions is to have a very successful venue that people, tourists and locals are showing up to. Some events will be small, some will be medium, some will be large, hopefully all kinds of diverse bands. So I can't tell you what the sound's going to be on a case by case basis. We did a rough study in the 90s, but yeah, it may be, it may be higher. But again, I would say the city council just amended their zoning code and did not make any change to residential adjacency standards for zoning. It's zero. So if the point was made earlier, nothing's been changed for a long time. There's a, it was in January and council said, I believe it was a unanimous vote by the Reno City Council, the updated zoning code, that there shall be no decibel levels in mixed use areas. And I think that frankly should, should be the baseline to answer your question with the caveat that you or Commissioner Villanueva, Commissioner Munoz, or the neighbors, right, can bring us back for a revocation proceeding or a modified condition and say, you know what, you've been here a year and you know what, we got three calls for a concert on July 4th and it was way too loud and decibels. We'll keep the sound monitoring equipment on to give you a data for baseline, right? So in a year, you say, when that spiked and we got three calls, sound monitoring showed it was 100.
We're going to bring up the acoustic.
Yeah, we're going to cap you at 65, at 95. So I think, you know, have the data. Go ahead, Mr. Consultant. Thanks, Chair One.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Luke Saxelby, Saxelby Acoustics, here to answer whatever questions. And I believe there's an open question. So we, we, this is a model, so you know, we did ambient noise monitoring on the site, so we did collect field data. But as far as the actual event noise, this is a 3D, sophisticated 3D sound plan is the name of the model. So we input the, you know, all the existing buildings, the site conditions, and then basically we model what would happen with a typical event. And we assumed a typical sound output of an average level of 90 dB at 100 feet from the stage.
Don't go anywhere yet, sir.
No, sir.
And then help me out too, because I was going to ask, Table Two, what was also unique on my site visit was standing there, 1 o'clock on a Monday afternoon and understanding there is a lot of ambient sound and trains, diesels, Harleys, whatever that is. So I guess a part of me was trying to balance with the residents and then also what's reasonable. And we see a peak daytime 82 decibels with nothing happening. Maybe you can explain that more in depth. And I know that's just a, probably a fleeting moment with the loud truck and its seconds, if not three or four. And it's not the same as amplified sound played for two hours, but maybe help us understand more what that table's about.
Sure. So this, this table, we had three monitoring sites. We've labeled them LT1, which is a long term. We have three complete days of monitoring, Friday, Saturday and a Sunday. That was near the Onyx Building, kind of the southwest corner of the site. So that was attached to the fence and left to run long term. The short term monitoring is, you know, more of a daytime, early evening, kind of a snapshot measurement. And yes, there was a peak, I believe it was from a motorcycle of 82. I would draw your attention to the LT1 site because I, you know, continuous monitoring data collected over several days is going to give you a better idea of the whole picture. And so, you know, we talk about sound, we talk about average, which is the LEQ descriptor. There's the L max, that's the, the highest level. And in this case, these are averages, right? So we have, you know, on a Friday, we had a, you know, daytime average of 57 and a maximum of 75. I do believe there was some, there were some brief occurrences up into the mid 80s, which would be typical of a motorcycle or maybe a siren or something like that.
And with the LT1, while you're on that, because I do think for some reason, when I was on site looking at the Onyx a lot, because they're right off stage, you know, stage right, whatever that is. And so if the applicant gets what they want, they have a successful event, the band's playing at the levels, at the decibels they'd like, and it's for two hours, what would be the decibel measuring for somewhere like the Onyx, which is the closest? What, what would those numbers look like compared, I guess, to this table?
So we, that is our, shown on our Figure Three, and we've, we have kind of call out boxes because the shading is difficult, as you can tell. And so we are predicting with that event of 90 dB at 100 feet from the stage, the Onyx would see 78 dB on an average.
Okay, yeah, okay, that answers that question. Thank you. I'll let you guys go after it.
Okay, let's, does anybody have any questions for the acoustics representative expert?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Munoz.
Okay.
If, if this goes through with, with what they are requesting, not what city has conditioned, is there something that can be placed on the property, trees, walls, something that can help knock down some of this sound?
Potentially, the challenge is where? So a wall is going to be limited by how tall a wall could be, right? If you're talking at the property line. So, you know, a six foot type wall is really only going to provide benefit of the ground floor. So realistically, there isn't, it's not practical to do some kind of wall to try to shield adjacent uses. It would just have to be too tall when you get into multi-story buildings.
What about trees or anything like that?
Trees don't really have much actual sound reducing benefit. They, they can somewhat scatter sound and maybe kind of minimize it, but really from an acoustics perspective, we don't assume any decibel reduction from trees.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question and I apologize, I did not catch your full name, but from, from what I understand, they're already out of compliance with going over that 75 with nothing going on based on what you measured at some times, like on Fridays, they're already above that 75 without any amplified sound.
So I think the importance here is the difference between average and we would define average by what's known as the LEQ, which is an hourly average versus maximum. And so in this table, the daytime LEQ is more or less the, the average continuous noise throughout the day, right? Versus something like a peak, which would be the L max value that only occurs, you know, it may occur throughout the day, but it's brief in time, right? So I think that's the distinction is the, the limit that's being applied to the project is based on, as my understanding would be the average noise, not the peak noise.
Okay, but without anything going on when a motorcycle went by or a diesel truck or the, you got levels above 80.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Let me ask that. Do we have other Commissioner or other questions? Thank you, Commissioners. Let me ask that. Do we have other Commissioner or other questions? Okay, I think you might be able to sit down for a couple of minutes. But we've been known to call people back up.
Of course. Thank you.
Hey Nate, I have a quick question for you, if you don't mind. I have a couple of quick questions. Oh, there you are. We're talking about the decibels and the acoustics. Is, if the amplified sound has to stop at eleven, is it, it's always going to be at eleven o'clock that amplified sound stops? Friday, Saturday, Friday and Saturday, and then during the week, it's going to stop at ten?
No, as, as condition, amplified sound would stop at ten o'clock.
All the time?
All the time.
Okay.
That, that's not to say that, that crowd noise and things of that nature wouldn't continue. But the amplified sound, your live entertainment, would, would stop at ten o'clock.
Okay. If we didn't have the condition of the seventy-five, would staff be okay with that?
Again, staff's recommendation is just carrying forward city policy regarding, regarding special activity and events. So it is just maintaining consistency and this is completely discretionary.
And then based on what Commissioner Villanueva was saying, and I think Garrett might have touched on it, with all these conditions, it doesn't, if, if the event or if that, the thing, if it becomes a nuisance or a disturbance, no matter what, it can be pulled, that will come back to the commission or the approval body and it, it can be stopped.
Well, that, that may be difficult to enforce without set parameters.
Right, with the conditions in there, sorry.
With conditions, yes. I mean, there's quantifiable measures.
And then my next question, I was a little confused on the two thousand. When I filled out special event permits, I have had to provide security or services in addition to, you know, what was already out there. Is that two thousand number, were you saying that anything below two thousand, they wouldn't have to provide additional security or services? Or what does, what is the service threshold and what? What I'm trying to prevent is city services being spread too thin for special events without having some support from the applicant.
That's right, yeah. It, it, you know, for example, previous special activity permits on the site for street vibrations, for example. You know, to pay, there was, there were two street vibration events. Some were over five thousand and some were, were under two thousand daily attendance. They required RPD, you know, participation. And that's the sort of thing where, where on a case-by-case basis, we don't want to miss that opportunity where, where the city is on the hook for providing services for a private event.
So is there a number where the city says, okay, you, it's on the applicant to provide additional services for security, whether that's a hired security firm or private to, to supplement what's already there for services?
Yeah, as, as condition, they would need to have a security plan for, for all of their operations. Larger events may need a more robust security plan in that that is addressed in the conditions of approval recommended.
Okay, that's where it's addressed. Okay, Commissioners, we have Nate back. Do we have other questions for Nate before we move on to Mr. Gordon?
I do, Chairwoman, I do, Commissioner Villanueva.
Okay, let's try and get through questions with Nathan and then we'll move on to Garrett. I think Commissioner Veltow is ready to sleep.
I'm thriving and wide awake right now, just for the record.
Am I up? Okay. Nate, can you touch on a little bit for me, some of the factors? I, I've never applied for a special event permit. I know that's again for private space, or excuse me, no, that's for the public space. And then the privilege licenses for large events on private spaces. Can you explain to me some of the factors that are considered by the city when administratively looking at granting a privileged license? Some of the things that need to be met with respect to restrooms, transit, public safety, some of those things, what, what are we looking at with an applicant, like, application like that?
I could touch on that topically, but I think Lieutenant Connolly or Ashley Turney might be able to better address that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can talk about it. So when somebody applies for like a special use permit, a good example would be like the Wine Walk, where you have a clothing boutique, doesn't normally serve alcohol, but they want to serve alcohol. So like Nate was saying, it is a activity that's not covered under their business license already. So it would be like a special use where they, they apply for a, a temporary, basically, to hold this activity. A special event would be if they were closing down a park, so Earth Day, Idlewild, that kind of thing. So when they apply for a special use permit, it goes to business license. They take a look at it. And then city staff, my department, fire, everybody has a chance to look at it. Same thing with a special, special event. And what we look at is, like you said, there, there's minimum restrooms, there's minimum ADA, so for every, I want to say for every one hundred people, you have to have one normal, for every two hundred and fifty people, I think you have to have one ADA. So there's, there's, there's those regulations. If they're serving food, the health department wants to see all their inspections. All the, the food trucks all have their inspections. Fire department looks at distances between booths. They have to maintain certain, you know, twenty-foot through their venue. So even if it's a closed street, there's often twenty feet between venues to, to get the fire trucks through. So those are some of the kind of considerations that we look at. And that's why I said, not every event that comes across my desk is staffed. So I may get an event where there could be four thousand people at City Plaza for, for a celebration. But due to the nature of the crowd, do, there's no, maybe there's no alcohol. Maybe it's some sort of, not calmer event, but an event where we're not worried about the, the makeup of the crowd.
Lieutenant, can I, can I just pause right there just for a second? Cut you off because you mentioned something I'd like to touch on. So even though you guys may not necessarily staff every event, regardless of whether or not you staffed or not, these cri- this criteria is still presented for review and thereby analyzed and considered before allowing a permit to proceed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think that answers my question. I, so going, going back to Nate, Nate, if, if that's the case with some of those permits, would, and this is going to be an opinion-based, so, I mean, if you don't feel comfortable answering it, that's fine. Would you argue that this is essentially a blank check for them to kind of go on with whatever events that they wanted, you know, throughout the year at any point, you know, subject to these conditions, of course? But I mean, essentially, that review process is kind of non-existent?
Well, that, that is a concern, Nathan Gilbert, for the record. Yes, and, and in consultation with various city departments, you know, analyzing what the application material submitted at two thousand, that, that, that is an appropriate threshold. You know, typically, those wouldn't, events under that threshold wouldn't, wouldn't trigger city services. Events over that, staff's recommendation would be to maintain that special activity permit to review. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's, it's a minor application. It may or may not be something that requires additional city services. But the recommendation is to maintain that review in instances where additional services may be warranted and would be applied.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all my questions for, for Nate. Thank you.
Okay, let's give Nate a quick break. And maybe we'll start with questions of Mr. Gordon. Mr. Gower, would you like to get us started? Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would. Garrett, a couple of questions for you. I guess the first one related to the noise considerations. And I think during your presentation, you presented a couple or maybe one condition in particular. You know, there's the, kind of the, the baseline DBA, the seventy-five DBA for the noise for the events. And then there's a consideration for noise impacts for these twenty large events. You know, what, what consideration have you given that? And is there, you know, a, a logic behind the, the condition that you propose? And I guess if you could roll into that, maybe your response to what we heard during public comments about the, the noise coming from the Eddie and how you're, you know, looking at mitigating that concern for this site.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Gower. So in regards to the proposed condition, we're not asking to change any decibel level condition. Although, you know, you heard the discussion tonight that no decibels for either large or small events could be appropriate. We're simply asking for an extra hour for amplified noise up until eleven PM on Fridays and Saturdays. So decibel level at seventy-five for smaller events, no decibel level, this is in this, this is a current condition, over seventy-five or over, up unlimited for larger events, but just the ability to go a little later on Friday and Saturdays. And as far as the, kind of the noise mitigations we've thought about, I talked with the architect this afternoon. And that was a consideration of designing the site, like the stage orientation of where it's located. We didn't want noise directed to the north, right? Where there's some residential properties, even though there's own mixed use, or directly to the south. So we oriented the stage, you know, to the east, toward the resort hotel casino, along with, you know, as we move forward with events and have speakers located, you know, on the actual stage. You know, all that will be taken into consideration of, you know, trying to project the sound toward east, toward Forest Street to minimize the noise impacts.
Sorry, slow getting to my mute button there. So I appreciate that response. And I guess for the, for the, for the larger events, we know that there's going to be the potential for twenty events that, you know, potentially, you know, they, they will not have a, you know, a maximum limit for, for sound. So there could be the potential for that, you know, sound to be observed throughout the downtown. Is there, you know, essentially a way, what, what considerations are there to, to give people an opportunity to, to know what, kind of what's on the, the, the schedule in terms of what's coming up and, you know, how they might be able to plan around it or anticipate or, you know, at least be aware of, of some of the considerations, you know, relative to events downtown.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, great, great question. So currently, a, an existing condition of approval is for the smaller events, we have to notify the city of those within thirty days. So I presume they will post them on the website, have some notice there. For the larger events, as you heard, the special activity process, an approval process will take place. And I believe the city of Reno also publishes who holds city, who holds special activity and special event permits. So that's also public. But to go a step further, one of the, I didn't get to really lay it out because I ran out of time in my presentation. But a third modified condition that we're suggesting is to make sure we post on the site, on one of our signs, you know, the Glow Plaza website, where people, you know, local could go to it and understand what events, you know, will be coming so they can plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for walking through that. And that, that logic is, it makes sense. Madam Chair, I guess if I could transition from sound and while Garrett's there, ask another question of him, if that's okay?
You bet.
Garrett, consideration for me, and it relates to the findings in terms of the compatibility, the use, and a little bit differently than how we've been talking about it to this point. But during the timeframe when the events are not happening. So, you know, the, the consideration, as I understand it, is that, you know, kind of prime time for the site and the events is during the summertime, you know, outdoor activity, outdoor venue, that makes sense. And we want to maintain kind of a vibrant downtown atmosphere throughout the whole year. And we have master plan policies to that effect. What consideration have you given to, you know, ensuring that this is a, a site that contributes to, to downtown year-round, even when there aren't events?
No, thanks for the question, Commissioner. Again, for the record, Garrett Gordon. So we think this, you know, proposal just accentuates what's already there, right? There's already the Reno's neon line, the wall, the light, the artwork, the Glow Plaza. So the Glow Plaza will always be open to the public. So that's year-round. They can come in, sit down, enjoy the artwork, enjoying the replica signs, you know, really enjoy the center of, of the district. The festival grounds, you're correct. There's prime time, probably spring through summer through fall. But we absolutely anticipate it to be a year-around venue. I mean, for example, you know, Christmas time. There's no reason why I don't see the ice skating rink get moved here. And Reno's neon line wall could certainly be red and green and bring in carolers and have a great Christmas event. Halloween, you know, haunted house event. You know, like I said, St. Patrick's Day tomorrow. So I think it could be used year-round, not only by us, but we imagine the community and the community organizations using it as well. I think our town could use it or any other local community who wants to come in, committee member, come in and use that event, you know, anytime throughout the year. We'd be happy to have a discussion with them. So I think we want to have as many events, and again, pursuant to Downtown Action Plan, really activate this downtown space to the extent possible. But we've already invested over four million dollars in streetscape improvements, artwork, replica signs, to, you know, start early, even before we opened up the event venue.
Thank you. Appreciate that response. And I, Madam Chair, I think that's all I've got right now in terms of questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gower. We'll go back into, actually, Commissioner Veltow, I'm sorry. Did you have questions for Mr. Gordon?
I, I do, if I can just ask a few questions, Garrett. I just want to walk through these conditions that you've proposed modifications for conditions and kind of get some understanding as to why they're important. The first is to add a condition that occupancy would be increased to thirty-seven hundred with a traffic study approved by the City of Public Works. Can, can you kind of talk me through why that matters for the project?
Absolutely. So our original parking study identified occupancy at two thousand. We did an updated study and did an updated review of the business plan and confirmed that thirty-seven hundred, in fact, could be accommodated with parking. And so we're asking that that would be the benchmark between no special activity permits and special activity permits. It's supported by the parking and traffic analysis that's on the record. And again, trying to find the middle ground with staff, we're not asking for you tonight to allow that by right. We would have to confirm that that increase is supported by a downtown traffic study. And one other point, and I want to make this really clear, I think the Madam Chair brought it up, and so did Nathan. There is absolutely no intent to bypass reimbursement for city services whether or not we have to pull a special activity permit or not. So if we have an event with five people and police are required or city services are required, we'll of course reimburse the city. If there's an event with five thousand people with a special activity permit, we'll reimburse the city. We reimbursed the city over a hundred thousand dollars already for last year's events, and that would just be standard practice. So there's no intent to bypass that obligation.
And just for people that may not interact in that, that world, there are set rates with public sector service providers. That's all, it's pretty industry standard.
For the record, Garrett Gordon, correct. You actually have to prepay for an event and then you get a reimbursement depending on if it's not used. So you're, the city's never held, held, never ends up holding the bag. They have the money.
And then the proposed amendment to the condition to change the time that amplified music can run until, why eleven o'clock versus ten o'clock?
Staff is recommending the ability to operate until eleven PM on Sunday through Thursday with amplified music stopping at ten. But staff is giving us the extra hour until midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. So we thought it was logical, and frankly, in talking to our concert promoters and, and other venue promoters, you know, having that ability to go to amplified music on Fridays and Saturdays until eleven is, is pretty important. And so go until eleven on Friday and Saturday. And so go until eleven on Friday and Saturdays, have that extra hour that staff is giving us until midnight, you know, clean up and get people out. But of course, if for some reason that eleven o'clock i- is causing a public nuisance or causing problems, I know I'll be back before you and this commission to have another conversation.
Great. And then the last question I have for you is, you said in your presentation that this could have gone through administrative approval. How should we consider that? Like, how should that evaluate, how should that come into play when we're evaluating this project?
I I mentioned that just because, you know, it's always Jacob's intent to have as much transparency and public input a- as possible. It is a live entertainment venue, it is outdoor entertainment, both, you know, technically could be approved administratively, but in working with staff, we decided to bundle it and bring it to this body, bring it to two NABs to get input to make sure, you know, everyone was comfortable, as hopefully we have a very successful venue and events. So as far as your findings or the conditions, I don't think it's relevant, but I think it's important that we're trying to err on the side of of transparency and and public input.
Great, thank you.
And I would just note that third condition on the screen, Commissioner Gower, is what I was referring to with the the website put on any signage for upcoming events.
Okay, folks and commissioners in chambers, do you have questions for Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, Commissioner Mooney, for the record. So just to be clear, you're looking for thirty-seven-hundred whenever? And then for the twenty events, you're looking for the max capacity of sixty-seven forty-two?
Yes, I'm just saying it a little different, different way.
Please.
That we would have the ability, you know, by right to go up to two thousand occupancy. If my condition was approved today, we would have the right to go up to thirty-seven-hundred with a traffic study approved by your Public Works Department. And over thirty-seven-hundred, there would be twenty events that would require a special activity permit.
And what would be the max capacity for those twenty events?
It would be what Fire Code allows, it's the sixty-seven hundred number.
Sixty-seven forty-two, okay.
Correct.
Can you give me a ballpark for parking within a, let's say, a three-quarter mile of the site with the Eldorado, the Circus Circus, the all, all those? What are we looking at, plus ten thousand?
I believe so, but let me pull up our traffic engineer who did that, who did that study.
Good evening, Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation. I'll show you a graphic that we prepared of just what's in the immediate area, and then I'll speak to the greater area, too. So I'd like to use the overhead, Michelle, please. Maybe we can zoom out a little. I'll start with a question. So we found seven hundred and eighty-five spaces through our study in the immediate area, that's that one to two blocks. It does not count on-street parking in those greater blocks. So there's, just for example, there's sixty spaces just within a block. So you extend that out over ten blocks, hundreds more, right, in total. We did not include any of the other casino property garages in the downtown area, so Eldorado, as you mentioned, Circus Circus, none of those were included, and there, and there's hundreds of spaces in many of those garages. So overall, I mean, the downtown parking supply is known to be in the thousands of spaces. And considering we have seven eighty-five just under Jacob's control, there, there's thousands of spaces downtown.
Okay, and then just because you are an expert in this, and I have season tickets to the Aces, and I will park at the casinos downtown, have dinner, and walk across. Would you consider that distance from the Aces to the downtown row area comparable or about the same?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, the, in the, in our industry, it's commonly viewed that a quarter-mile walk is completely acceptable and in common. And so those, those casino properties and other garages are within that distance for sure.
Okay, so in your professional opinion, parking is no concern whatsoever?
It, it's not in my mind, no.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant, if that's okay?
Okay.
Garrett, how long has this venue space been around where you guys have been requesting these permits? Was it, has it been a year? I know you guys have said at least a year, right?
Correct. We actually were planning on bringing this before this body, pre-COVID, it was called the Sands Connect, but COVID hit. So yes, last year, we completed the Glow Plaza and started with those smaller events.
Okay. So you guys have done this for about a year. Why do you think it's appropriate now versus giving it a couple more years of doing the permit process and kind of waiting and seeing now that we're kind of, well, we're still in a pandemic, so I don't want to, excuse me for even anyways. So now that we are dealing with COVID a little differently than we were peak COVID in 2020, do you think it, I mean, what's your guys' rationale for bringing it forward now versus in two to three years after we kind of see how things begin to play out?
Thanks for the question. For the record, Garrett Gordon, I think, as I mentioned before, it's the financial investment, you know, the certainty that if you're going to invest six million dollars in improvements in the stage and landscaping and shade structure, that there is some cert- certainty that so long as you comply with the rules, code, and the conditions of approval, that you can continue to operate wi- without concern. And so it would be, I would argue, foolish or a bad business plan to invest that significant amount of money in our little downtown Reno without certainty that you'll be able to, you know, operate in perpetuity so long as you follow the rules.
So what are those, I mean, I understand you guys have the, some of the infrastructure investments on the private property, but what are other indirect investments, or, I mean, like indirect benefits, economic benefits, job benefits? What are some of those incidental benefits that will drive from this? Because I, I just don't, what comes to mind is, for example, the Harris', and I know the Harris' property isn't there anymore, and I know that they had outdoor venue space there. But in my mind, that's an incidental concept to a gaming establishment or to, you know, restaurants. And so there's a lot more going on there for that kind of space to exist. And I just don't see that with this space. It, it's a, it's a venue, but I don't really see any benefits other than maybe some art and sculptures. Can you elaborate for me on that?
I look at it completely different. I mean, I think this could be our town on steroids. I mean, you have our town numerous events, I think hundreds of events for a, for a month, that this community and surrounding states and nationally, folks coming in and attending those events. If we now had this downtown venue to bring more events like that, to bring bigger events, the possibilities are endless. I think you could say the economic impact is hotel room nights. We could pack hotels downtown, not only the Sands, but the Eldorado, the Circus Circus, the Renaissance. And what do those room nights do? Those trigger room tax. Where does a room tax go? To RSCBA. What does RSCA, RSCBA do with that room tax? They advertise for a whole region, including Sparks. So the more hotel rooms that you, more people you're putting in hotel rooms, the more taxes you're creating, the more we can market our area, we're just going to continue to grow this hopefully vibrant downtown corridor that we've all wanted, and not only we, but the Downtown Action Plan asks for. So I would say room tax, I would say economic activity to all the restaurants, from the little granite street down the, down here, to the big steak houses in, in the Eldorado, to the bars and restaurants along the river. I think the economic activity is exponential when you're bringing this many people to a really cool venue, folks who haven't been downtown in a long time, folks who haven't visited Reno in a long time or ever, it's going to be fantastic both for the city, for the county, for RSCBA, and I think for everyone involved.
And you don't think, in your, in your opinion, and as a representative for the applicant, you don't think it's a little premature? We don't have, I feel like we don't have enough information. And, I mean, maybe another year, we'd have a little bit more, and we'd have a better idea. You guys wouldn't be open to just waiting another year to see where we are, given it in a year or two, to kind of just figure out where we are at that point? Is that just not an option for you guys? You're just, it's now or never type of thing?
I think that's right. Now's the time. I mean, this is my first time before this body, but before the city council, I'm asked every day when I appear, when are shovels going in the ground? When are you building something on this property? When are you bringing people to downtown Reno? When are you bringing families to downtown Reno? And my answer to the council, and now you, is yeah, this, this is it, the time is now. Shovels are going in the ground, millions of dollars are being invested to bring back a dead, dilapidated downtown corridor to a vibrant, exciting tourist and local enhanced area. So I, I would say the time is now, and that's been directed at us from the council. Let, let's get moving.
That's all my questions. Thank you, Chair, or Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions for Garrett? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Garrett, thank you for all the questions. I'm going to go in a little different direction here, just trying to understand some of these other conditions. With respect to, I think there's some conditions about security and some conditions about queuing. And by extension of that, I'm looking at some conditions with respect to occupancy and exiting with how this is going to be used. So I guess the first question is, there is a, there is a condition here that talks about providing a plan to the satisfaction development services staff for queuing and pedestrian access around the site. Can you give me an idea, at least preliminarily, how you're intending for, I mean, even two thousand people, how are they going to be sort of crowd controlled and queued for access into the site?
Michelle, would you mind pulling up my presentation, if that's okay? Commissioner, give you a map? So while she's pulling it up, yes, absolutely, we, regardless if it's a small or large event, we have certain conditions, including a security plan and queuing plan. The idea would be, this is working here.
You can use the mouse.
There we go. Maybe this one. So as far as queuing, we, we do not, we know if we queued on a public right of way, we'd need an encroachment permit. I think you heard from one resident, he didn't think there was enough width on the sidewalk. We have zero intent to encroach on and have queuing on any public right of ways. The benefit we have here is we have this current Glow Plaza, right, where people can stand in there, congregate, queue on our property, on our land, that we can control before going into the festival grounds. We also own the two parking lots directly east that have been improved and would be for parking, but also another access point for queuing on our land if necessary. So we queue on our land, and this will be in our, in our study, we'll queue on our land outside of the public right of way. And again, these are festival grounds. We imagine not a lot of queuing, honestly, people coming in, people leaving to go to dinner, people coming in, you know, kind of an ebb and flow throughout the day, evening, night. But we think we can, we can handle everything on our private property.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess maybe, I'm looking at some of these occupancies just a little bit differently in terms of operational. From a festival ground standpoint, and from the discussion, which has been robust about, you know, the numbers of people, are you looking at these as ticketed events so that you have an idea where the occupancy is going to be? Or is this something where you're going to be dependent upon onsite security to limit the numbers? Obviously, you know, becomes a question when you have a, a festival ground that can accommodate over six thousand, but yet you're only, you know, allowed two thousand or thirty-seven-hundred, and there's more room there. What, what's the process, you know, under this, you know, entitlement proposal to manage the numbers so that, you know, you're not, you know, obviously getting to those larger events? And I think that's, I mean, the, the number of the larger events is a big discussion that we have, but just maybe thinking about operationally, how are you going to plan for at least knowing where you fit into the realm of, of attendees?
Sure, now, thanks for the question. I think first of all, it'll be kind of on a case-by-case basis. But when looking at the conditions, and this was important to staff, that we'll have onsite security, monitor and record onsite attendance for all activities to ensure that occupancy is not exceeded. Records shall be made available to the city upon request. So we would imagine that there'd be onsite security who will be keeping track of folks walking in and, and, you know, walking out. The condition is that it's at one time. So as we think people are going to be coming in and out of these festival grounds, you know, we don't know at one ti, I mean, we, we're pretty certain that we're not going to exceed those occupancies at, at one time, but we need that flexibility. So I think it's a long way of saying onsite security, we monitoring how many people come in pursuant to this condition, the city can request that record at any time, and if we don't have those records available, then I would argue we're in violation of our use permit and would be subject to revocation.
And then kind of the last question along those lines, and, and this is one from looking at, at the plans as presented. One of the conditions talks about limiting access to the south, minimizing the number of, and I, I would try to read the, the specifics, but it was, it was essentially significantly limit site entering and exiting away from the southern portion of the site and address trespass concerns onto the private alley that's not part of the site. And the reason I bring this up is I'm a little concerned when I look at the plan for the festival grounds, and I look at the exiting for the festival grounds, at a max occupancy, the exiting shows almost five thousand of those occupants exiting directly to the south. There's only one exit to the north through the Glow Plaza opening on the Fourth Street. There's only a single or a double gate to the east and to the west. So how are we, how are you proposing to reconcile that condition to limit access going in that direction with a plan that would be reviewed by the fire department that indicates that's the, the direction that most of the people would be going in?
And you make a good point at, at the end of that comment of, yeah, well, for the larger events, that where we will have to disperse people will require a special activity permit approved by the fire department. So they'll have input no matter what for those larger events. We do envision folks coming through the Glow Plaza, back to Fourth Street, and then heading eastbound through our, our lots back to Ralston. The Uber is actually located kind of on, on Ralston, behind, behind the Sands. The, I didn't mention the alley because that would be kind of a third option that we would need approved for larger events by staff, because we only own half the alley, so we'd probably have to rope it off and figure out how we get people in and out. So it, it is a condition, it's going to vary on a case-by-case, but hopefully what gives you comfort is for the larger events, the fire department, under the special activity permit, permit process, will be, will be providing input.
So the intention would be even for the smaller events, providing adequate access, entrance and exit, as you mentioned, to the east, to the west and to the north, to minimize the use of, of those gates on that side of the site?
Correct. That queuing plan applies to all our events. So even before we can have our first event, we need staff to approve our queuing plan to address the concerns you've mentioned.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. Madam Chair, I have a question along a different path, so before I go there, I want to see if anybody else has any questions with any of the security or access, just to keep Garrett's head in the same spot.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Johnson, I think after you're done, we're going to move into, start into discussion, so please ask your questions.
Okay, so I, I guess then the, the second question, and this is going back to, with respect to the number of master plan priorities that you've indicated that this project supports, most of them arts and culture based, most of them based on potential use of the site. I, I guess one thing that I wanted to, to go back to is for, I guess, the master plan recommendations for the northwest quadrant of downtown and for the urban corridor, both recommend a minimum floor area ratio for development in those areas, which an open festival ground doesn't meet at all. So I'm wondering whether, in your mind, as part of your presentation, that the limited areas of this part of downtown and the urban corridor and the requirements of a master plan to look at floor area ratio there and look at the different kinds of development, that those are less important when looking at our priorities than the arts and cultural events that you've highlighted as the master plan benefits of this site?
No, thanks for the question. So I, I'm not asking tonight for any deviation from FAR requirements. So this complies with the master plan and the zoning code that relates to FAR. But as far as kind of that overarching umbrella policy of, of more, you know, density, yeah, I think you gotta, you have to balance it, right? And I think the balance here is getting people, bodies in downtown Reno, again, will only trigger that intensive only trigger that intensity that you're looking for. I can say on another Jacobs property, we're moving forward with 120-unit apartment complex on Second Street. South of Second Street, there's two apartment projects going up today.
Well, again, I'm not talking about elsewhere, I'm talking about this, I was asking specifically because this is one of the few urban corridors that the master plan designates for a certain number of different policies, which this particular project does not meet. So that was why I was just, you know, I'm pointing out that as a condition that we're looking at for weighing priorities. And so the development priority of bringing people down there can also be met with the different types of uses and development for the master plan. So I appreciate the answer, I appreciate the wider development look on it, but I was, you know, specifically asking about that, so.
And I'll be brief, I know the hour is getting late, but, right, from a legal perspective, you're required to be in substantial conformance with the master plan, right? So not every project is going to comply with every policy. So I think we would take the position, as its staff did with their recommendation of approval, that we are in substantial compliance with a substantial portion of the master plan as relates to the direction that council and this community gave in their downtown action plan for venues and activities like this.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that answer.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I believe, let me just do a quick check, since I told we're moving off of questions after this, I want to make sure I've addressed all of them, so. Nope, I think, I think that was it. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioners, I'm going to ask really quickly if anybody needs to take a very, very quick break, or if we can move right into discussion.
Madam Chair, Chambers looks ready.
We are ready to move into discussion. Who would like to start us off?
Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll start discussion, and if I could pick up where Commissioner Johnson left off, because that, weighing the policies of the master plan was a primary consideration for me, number one, and then the compatibility of the use, you know, relative to the design and the conditions that we're putting on it, number two. You know, I looked closely at the master plan policies, and, you know, one of our goals, obviously, is to, as Commissioner Johnson identified, increase the density of, you know, residential units and intensity of mixed uses downtown. You know, I think the policies under Section 3, 3.1, 3.2, really point heavily also to that arts and culture and diversifying, you know, outdoor recreation spaces and things like that. So it was, you know, definitely kind of a competing policy scenario, as we see a lot of times with these projects. You know, I do remember, as, you know, I know some of the other commissioners do too, going through the master plan update process, that, you know, bringing that vibrancy back down to downtown was really a key, key theme that we heard, in addition to, you know, things like sustainability and housing affordability, it was, we've got to make downtown a better place. We want to bring people back there and make it a destination for not only, you know, locals, but for tourists. And we want, we want to be able to say that, you know, downtown Reno is a place where we want people to come who are coming from out of town, and we want to be proud of that. So I think, you know, from a master plan policy perspective, you know, I kind of reconciled that, and I do think that, you know, this proposal kind of aligns with that revitalization and kind of arts and culture entertainment theme, particularly being in the entertainment district there. So, you know, I'm excited for that aspect of the project. Obviously, the, you know, the noise consideration is a concern. You know, I do think that staff and the applicant have done a good job, from my perspective, of, you know, studying it, proposing some conditions that, you know, address some of those concerns. So, you know, I'm comfortable with what is being proposed by staff to address those concerns. So I just wanted to start off discussion with those thoughts, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Commissioner Veltou?
I want to, you know, echo what Commissioner Gower was saying, as far as the weighing of competing master plan policies. I think that this is a good opportunity to tap into the arts and culture focus. And in my mind, you know, I don't want, I don't think we should lose focus in the broader vision here, this seems to be like the downtown action plan at work. I see this project as something that's been successful in other markets. If we look at downtown Las Vegas, for instance, they've put in place similar outdoor areas for music and shows that I think have been super effective, and it's created a very vibrant area, which is something that I think our master plan speaks to and encourages us to do. As far as the, you know, the sound issue, I, my only concern with this is that we're setting them up for failure, given how it's monitored, and I'm skeptical that the existing noise surrounding this project isn't going to trigger or exceed the 75, the limit proposed by staff. And, you know, I'd be amenable to either getting rid of it or setting a higher number, because it's 24-hour mixed-use zones are not subject to residential noise standards. And if we look at what happens in Sparks and their outdoor arenas, we don't see the same types of restrictions. So that's my concern with how that is conditioned. As far as the other conditions, the proposed conditions of approval, I think those are, those are very reasonable, having an increase to 3,700, but subjecting that to some sort of traffic analysis, it seems reasonable to me and mitigates some of the concerns that I've heard talking to the folks about this project. And I think the other condition to number 10, that allows amplified music at a later time, is also very reasonable. And I like the idea of getting more locals involved and adding a website on a sign. So I think I largely fall in line with Commissioner Gower, I didn't necessarily hear his thoughts on the conditions, modifications, but I'd be curious if other folks would be on board with either addressing sound or, you know, hearing their thoughts out. I obviously don't want to make perfect the enemy the good, but those are, those are my only concerns, is that we might be putting them in a position not to succeed.
All right. Commissioner, do we want to start with Commissioner Munoz in chambers? We might have lost Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, yeah, Commissioner Munoz, for the record. Being a Reno resident for almost two decades now, and seeing the ebb and flow of the downtown area, this is way overdue, absolutely way overdue. This should have been done a long time ago. And I believe that the conditions that the applicant is asking for are not unreasonable. I believe the Friday, Saturday, 11 o'clock makes perfect sense, the 3,700, even Lieutenant Connolly said that the NRS sets the standard to set permits off is at 2,500, not even 2,000, the city's limiting it to 2,000. I don't think that is reasonable. I think it should be at least the NRS at 2,500, but I don't think 3,700 is unreasonable. The parking is not an issue down there. Traffic has never been an issue in that area down there. The sound, the decibels being there, when I did a walk of the property on Monday, there was a guy leaf-blowing the entire time, which had to be upwards of 85 decibels. I mean, it was not quiet at any means. So I believe that maybe the recommendation by Commissioner Veltou of upping the 75, closer to 85, we saw what the max was during an event there, would be something I'd be in support of. So, but I think I commend them for trying to do this. I think this is well-needed in the area, and I think it's a beautiful project if it goes through.
Commissioner Villanueva, a couple of points I want to touch on. The first is, despite what the applicant says, I disagree that this is not a unicorn. I think this is a unicorn. I don't know that there's anything like it. I know we've heard the Eddie, I don't think that's, I think that's also apples to oranges. This is unique, and I think, I think granting a privileged license that runs with the land is very key to this discussion. I think it's premature to do that. I'd like to see, I'm not saying that I'm against this, you know, I just want to see how things play out. It's very early, premature, we don't know very much yet. A lot of what's planned to be developed has not been developed yet. I personally don't see anything wrong with having the applicant continue to go about requesting the permits like he's, like they've done the last year. And like, as far as I know, all applicants are required to do for these type of event permits. Safety and security is an issue for me. So Route 91 kind of comes to mind in Las Vegas. I don't know if that's been a consideration here. I know that's always on the back of my mind, because my sister was there, so that's always a concern. I know Veltou mentioned the downtown Las Vegas events outdoor. I used to actually live at the Ogden, and I was present for at least two Life is Beautiful events. Those events actually require permitting. Those are not privilege licenses that they have permanently, where they can have those things happen every year, they have to apply for those every year. Security has to be monitored, as far. And I think after Route 91, I'm pretty sure they had snipers, but I, I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure, but I don't, I'm not 100% sure, so. I'm also concerned about non-venue patrons loitering around the property, so those who may not be ticket holders, who may be kind of hanging out at the casinos, see a bunch of folks across the way, you know, just kind of creating a lot more cause for loitering in groups and things like that, that otherwise would not be present. Yeah, I'd like to see the continued use of the special use permit. Again, I'm not opposed to this necessarily, I just think it's premature. I want to know more. As far as I am concerned, it's not enough for me to say they're unwilling to wait because of the investment. It's almost like they're threatening to, you know, threatening this license in exchange for their investment, and that doesn't, that makes me uncomfortable, saying that, you know, either you give us this privileged license and entitlement now, or else. And I don't really like the way that's being thrown around, and I don't really think it holds water. And so those are some of the points that I'd like to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dragic?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Dragic, I'm in a total agreement with Commissioner Munoz and Commissioner Veltou. I'm really on all their counts. I want to see this be a success. My thoughts when I walked the property were, you know, the decibels and other factors included, if we cap them, you know, what kind of success level were they have, and will we have an investment that really is meeting its potential? I think something that we really didn't note enough of, but I asked during my meeting, was that it's free, so we are helping out, you know, and bringing vibrancy for people across all economic demographics. And my understanding is that these are not ticketed events, and so when it comes to queuing and things like that, I don't think we're going to have that issue, and it sounds like they'll have it handled when it comes to the fire department and those bigger events. I support all the modified conditions and would be willing to look at, you know, support eliminating the decibel level. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dragic. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excellent discussion, excellent points tonight. I guess, maybe the reason, the concern that I have is probably less about when the activities are happening. I think all of the comments that we have here, all of the arts and culture, all of the, you know, discussions that we're talking about with an events plaza in this area to bring people to, is very valid and certainly something that we need. The concern that I have, and maybe for the reasons for bringing up some of those master plan issues, is that, you know, we're talking, we're talking about special events, we're talking about, you know, weekend events, we're talking about, you know, potentially some longer-duration events, but we're really talking about a limited amount of time during the 365 days of the year, that this is an activated space. When it's activated, it's great. I think that's the intent here, but the concern that I have and the reasons for looking at some of these master plan things, talking about, you know, a greater variety of uses and a greater density of things, is because from a city development standpoint, that's how you make sure that something is active 365 days a year, especially in a 24-hour town, where you have different kinds of uses. And so, understanding that, you know, looking at what's in front of us is not that, and, you know, there is no requirement for that, these are master plan recommendations for floor area ratio and density and everything, but they are master plan considerations. So to me, that was, that was a question, but then, I guess, to echo with Commissioner Villanueva, and maybe go back to Nathan's presentation, this is, this goes with the land. So while we have a committed, by their own accounts, landowner with some massive financial inlay in here, for us to think about them maybe walking away from this doesn't seem to be part of the discussion, but one of the first things I learned on this commission is that everything that we entitle stays with the land, not with the applicant. So under this scenario, we have a opportunity here, and we're looking at something that allows, based on the applicant's recommendations, up to 3,700 people at this site with potentially, you know, little limits on their decibels, which by all accounts will work great for the plans and everything that are here, but then, you know, if there's another operator that comes along, even if there's a change in the person that's booking the events, all of these conditions still apply. So none of these, you know, requests for special activity permits have to happen up to a certain threshold, and we're relying, based on what we're seeing here, on our conditions being adequate for that, and the conditions around there not necessarily changing based on what's being presented there. So that's where my concern comes in, is that I'm looking at this, you know, as a excellent space when it's active, but wondering what's going to happen when it's not. What does this look like at, you know, from 9 o'clock until 3 o'clock in the middle of the day, when there's nobody around? Is it just, you know, an open site that's not active? And we're basically allowing that to continue in perpetuity with the approval of this. And again, these are weighing different master plan conditions, and I appreciate all of the comments here, but that's, that's really the way that I'm looking at it, is trying to understand and take the excitement of what this is for the times that it's doing it, and apply it, you know, in perpetuity for whoever's using it. And that's, that's where I guess I'm struggling with the master plan finding. So I appreciate what everybody's saying, I can't even disagree with any of the comments that you have, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it from that other perspective. So, thank you, Madam Chair, those are my comments.
Madam Chair, I just want to add to that, if that's okay.
Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and give my thoughts on discussion, and then I'll
Thank you.
Circle back to you, Commissioner Villanueva. Appreciate everybody's comments, good discussion. And I think I've heard in meetings before that we're, you know, the planning commission is the keeper of the master plan, and we're talking about it a lot under this agenda item, and I was just doing a quick, quick run-through. This agenda item has more master plan similarities or conforming attributes than any of the other two agenda items that we looked at tonight. There's seven, I don't know how you want to call them, meets the goals and policies, according to the staff report. So I think there was one with five and maybe one with four that we saw tonight, and we didn't discuss that, really. When I was down there, I heard noise that was way beyond, and it was actually people, there was a couple of people swearing up and down the street there. And I think that something like this is going to not stop that activity, but I think that if we bring more people downtown and it becomes more vibrant, we're going to be pushing away from that. So I hope. I, my only concern, I agree with the decibel, I think we're kind of setting ourselves up for failure there, and I'm not sure, you know, I know that the noise that I heard was much, was way above 80, and that was just a couple of guys walking up and down the street. I'm more concerned with the time restrictions. I would be open to 11:00 PM on the weekends. The other thing, based on what Garrett was saying, between the 2,000 and the 3,700, the parking and the queuing isn't a concern of mine, it's not the traffic. It was what Lieutenant Connolly said about reviewing the applications. So if we were to increase that, I would maybe want to get some feedback from Lieutenant Connolly on if that would be acceptable to him and his team. And what other thing did I have? I think I think, I think this is, I think this is good for downtown. Commissioner Villanueva, thank you for letting me go. Did you have something else to bring up?
Yeah, and I apologize, I did not mean to cut you off. I thought you had went already. I apologize for that. Thank you for touching, coming back to me. I, yeah, I just wanted to add to what Commissioner, my colleague here, Commissioner Johnson was saying regarding just the use. Again, I, I think I did touch on it earlier with the applicant. The, the only thing that I can think of that's similar was the Harrah's event space. And again, that was incidental to gaming, which was happening 24 hours a day, restaurants, which was there. Things that were, that space was occupied constantly with other things happening. And with regard to this space, other than the summertime, it is going to be vacant. So, you know, not to reiterate everything he said, but yeah, it's great for what's going to be happening during the peak periods. But what about the rest of the year when it's just going to be vacant? And, and I've seen vacant lots and I, I, it doesn't really make sense for that space. Again, I, I think an event space is wonderful. I think festival grounds are wonderful. I just don't know that they need a privileged license and an entitlement to do it. I think they should just do what everyone else does until that they, until they earn, earn the privilege. And I just don't think that they've earned it yet. So thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Munoz. I, I, I want to agree with what, what both you were saying, Commissioner Villanueva, Commissioner Johnson. If it was a blank piece of concrete with a rock wall around it or a concrete wall around it, then I could say, yeah, this is not something that is needed down there. But what they're planning, what they're showing and what this is going to look like. To me, it feels like an open space. It feels like a park. It feels like something that when you drive by, you want to look. It's not just a parking lot. And so while I can completely understand if, if this was just a piece of concrete and nothing else, it doesn't bring anything to the area. What they're proposing, in my eyes, is something that that area needs, something that'll, that'll beautify it. And so that's, I think, where we're going to differ a little bit there on when the space isn't being used. It's not a parking lot, you know? It is something beautiful and it is something that's going to bring consistency of better things to the area. So I, I think that's where we just disagree a little bit on there, but I do appreciate your comments.
Commissioner Veltou?
I would like to make a motion unless there's further comments.
I do have one more comment and I swear it'll, it'll, I'll stop, I'll stop after I ask this question. It's for Nathan because Mr. Arthur right here, my colleague here, brought something up that actually just triggered her question. If that's okay to ask you a question, Nathan, what happens if we grant this and the applicant decides that he's not going to do, it's, they're not going to do what they've proposed? Does that like, does that privilege still run with the land?
They would have 18 months to commence activity or the entitlement would expire. And as previously noted, they, they do have site improvement permits, building permits in, for city review currently. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Veltou, before you make a motion really quick, I would like to ask Lieutenant Connolly what his thoughts might be on that. Oh, you just switched, switched on my screen. Between the 2,000, 2,500 and 3,700 attending notice, if you could provide some input on that. I'd appreciate it, please.
Yes, absolutely. Lieutenant Ryan Connolly, we're going to pay for the record. Obviously, we'll, we'll make whatever your guys' decision is work. That's, that's our job to support the city's vision, your, your direction and we'll make it work. The, the difference between 2,000 and 4,000, it's, it's not, depending on the venue or the, the type of crowd, it's not that big. Obviously, a motorcycle rally, if, let's say, an outlaw motorcycle gang wants to hold a birthday party there and they bring 500 people, that's going to be a whole lot different than if there is that Christmas carolers and they bring in 5,000. So that's, that's what we look at. I think, and just speaking of my, my opinion, take it for what it's worth. I think the higher number you allow without the initial review, the more important it is to do that, the yearly check-in or the yearly review or bringing them back in for, for review. Obviously, the longer that the venue is open, the more data we'll have as far as this attended, this attendance called, causes many calls for service. So then, like the Jacobs representative was saying, you guys always have the ability to bring them back in. Luckily, I have a good relationship right now with the folks over at the Sands and Jacobs. And our working relationship is very, very tight. And I have no concerns that they wouldn't call me if they had concerns about a venue there or band they were bringing in or whatever to get my opinion on it. But like has been said, if Jacobs decides to sell his properties in six months and someone else comes in. And so those are our concerns. Like I said, we'll make whatever you guys work. We kind of look at that 2,000, 2,500, just because that's what's codified in NRS as kind of being a, a number that they've determined as being of concern for increased staffing. That's associated with EMS, but we kind of piggyback off that. So I hope that answers your question best I could.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Veltou.
This might be a little bit of a lengthy motion, so bear with me. No matter case number, LDC 22-00038, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to conditions with three modifications. First being to add a condition that occupancy should be increased to 3,700 based upon amended, based upon, based on amended parking and traffic analysis with a traffic study approved by City Public Works. The second modification being an amendment to condition number 10 to allow amplified music until 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. And the third modification being to remove the limit on decibels in condition 10 and condition 11 and make the conforming changes that are required to condition 12. Also with an additional condition that the website list must be listed on a sign so that locals are aware of upcoming events. And I can make all the necessary findings.
That's impressive considering it's like three o'clock in the morning, right? Sorry.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Veltou. That was impressive. But I, I do want to be sure that I understood your, your third condition. Could you, hopefully you had it written down, not on memory. I want to make sure that I, that I, that I have that.
Are you referring to the decibel change?
Yes, yes.
So the goal is to remove the limit, the cap on what decibels are permitted for the site. It, I think that the way to do that is to remove the reference or the limit in condition 10 and condition 11. And it seems like you then have to make a change to condition 12. But I would defer to however you feel would make sense to make that change.
So, so for clarification, there would be no decibel cap at all? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Commissioner Dragic, I second and can make all the findings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could add discussion here, I'm 90% in favor of the motion as presented. Unfortunately, I'm not in favor of the removal of the decibel limit. I think we need some sort of metric to be able to, to, for staff to be able to monitor sound levels, to have an understanding of what the, the sound is. I, I'm not unfortunately in favor of removing that.
Commissioners, other, other discussion on the motion and the second?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, two comments. I, I'm not able to support the, the motion. I guess what, what I would say is I was looking at the, my initial conditions were consistency with the Reno master plan, which I think I've, I've spoken of. I was able to make the findings for the compatibility with surrounding development until the decibel level was removed. So if that goes forward, then that's another finding that I cannot make. So as submitted, I cannot vote for it based on my inability to make the finding for the consistency with the Reno master plan and the compatibility with the surrounding development.
Okay, I guess we'll do a roll call vote and see.
Can we continue? Is it, is it open for discussion right now?
Yeah, it's open, but we can do a vote and see what happens and maybe make another motion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Munoz. Commissioner Veltou, would you be willing to change that decibel to 85 for the non-20 events instead of the 75?
Well, Commissioner, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to getting to a yes that I think achieves the goal. If, if that, it needs to happen for you to be comfortable, is that this needs to be, there needs to be some sort of cap. And maybe that cap is then at 85 decibels. You know, I'm still concerned with just walking around that site and hearing a ton of noise. And what's going to happen if we keep going down this road and there's, you know, how do we? I don't want to set them up for failure, as I said before. So that's my concern. So I, I guess I'm curious, you know, is that necessary to get you to the point of? You know, I, I think if we're talking about 85 for some of the smaller events, I'm on board so that it's not, you know, it's not an everyday thing that there's no limit, but will that work to get you on board?
Yeah, that would get me on board. Commissioner Dragic, Commissioner Veltou, same as me to get this going. And I agree, as much as I'd like to see no cap, but compromise is fine, especially in light of Commissioner Gower and Commissioner Johnson's comments.
Okay, Michelle, let's go forward with the roll call vote, please.
Well, could I?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Veltou, sorry, you need to revise your motion. Sorry.
I, I'd kind of like to hear if that results Commissioner Gower's concerns as well.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that we're, as planning commissioners, I don't think we necessarily have the liberty to, to throw out decibels. I mean, we're not, we're not sound engineers. We frankly don't really know what we're talking about in that arena. So I, my, my position is that staff has presented the 75 decibels as a benchmark based on information that was presented in the sound study to use as a metric for understanding and putting some parameters around sound that leaves the site. So if we take that metric away and we take that, that benchmark that was based on science away, then we're removing that, the ability for staff to be able to monitor and enforce sound associated with this site. So that's, that's my position with this and that's why I'm still, I would like to see the, the 75 decibels used. If staff finds in the future that this isn't working, that 75 is too low, then, you know, they can come back with a new sound study and go to 85. But I don't think that we should be modifying that tonight.
Understood. Well, I, I appreciate that. I guess that, what is the procedural? Do we, do I withdraw the motion and resubmit it with an 85 decibel cap? If that's the intent of the motion? Or is it sufficient to just, maybe legal can weigh in?
You can modify your motion or amend your motion to either impose the 75 decibel cap or the 85 decibel cap. And then we can take a vote on that motion as amended.
Thank you so much. In, in that case, I would modify my motion to maintain everything that was said except have an 85 decibel cap.
Okay, do we have a second?
Commissioner Munoz, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Veltou, a second by Commissioner Munoz. Any other discussion?
Clarification that it's an 85 decibel cap?
Yes, sir, that, that is my intent.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Taylor?
Um, yes.
Dragic?
Yes.
Gower?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Munoz?
Yes.
Veltou?
Yes.
Villanueva?
No.
So the vote is four to three.
Okay, Garrett, I'm just gonna, or Mr. Gordon, since you've only been before us once, let's not come before us again with this item. And please, please, please be a good neighbor and we appreciate your time.
Well, thank you very much.
Nathan, Lieutenant Connolly, Officer Gil Blanco, thank you so much for your time and sticking with us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we need to read the, the appeal process into the record?
Oh, you know what? I would ask if Commissioner Dragic could do that.
Sorry, I was chatting on the side, not listening to you. Please do that again.
Would you read the appeal process in the record?
Oh, you have that, Jason?
Thank you, Michelle.
Commissioner Dragic, appeal process. Any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor or a city council member or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. Any appeal, together with fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 business days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. If the applicant has elected to use the former zoning code in effect prior to January 13th, 2021, as authorized per RMC, 18-01-602, appeals must be filed within 10 calendar days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. And if the 10th calendar day falls at a weekend or holiday when the clerk's office is not open, the appeal may be filed the next business day.
Thank you very much. Okay, Michelle, can we move on to item number six? Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a meeting next Thursday that has, I believe, two relatively small items on the agenda. So it should be a quick one.
Okay, thank you very much. Jason, staff announcements.
Thank you. Jason Garcia-Laboo, Planning Manager, for the record. Announcements for the commission this evening. The city received an appeal for the Reno Iron Works project from the SPCA. So that happened on April, or that will be happening April 13th at the city council. A second item, the planning commission will be holding a tree ordinance workshop on March 28th. So that will be the next meeting. So looking forward to seeing everybody. In addition to that, our next planning commission meeting for regular planning items will be April 6th and we're anticipating approximately eight items. So it looks like a pretty full agenda. So that's, that's all the staff announcements today.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Item number eight, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. I don't see any. Item number nine, moving on to public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment or does anybody wish to make public comment on the Zoom?
I did not receive any requests to speak, forms for this item, and it doesn't appear that anybody is raising their hand on Zoom. I did not receive any voicemails either.
Okay, item number nine, sorry, item number 10, adjournment.
Don't move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Appreciate your time.
Hey, those of you, those of you on Zoom, keep enjoying your vacations.